Can I have a member certified closed session for us, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Holler.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
So, Ordigo, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Ms. Holler?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Hi. All right, I'll turn it over to Dr. Herron for her superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week was Veterans Day, and throughout the school division, we showed our deep gratitude for our veterans and military-connected families through presentations, activities, and student-led programs. On behalf of WJCC schools, it is our honor to thank our community's veterans, active-duty service members, and their families for their selfless dedication and service. Believe it or not, planning for graduation is already well underway. Earlier this month, we shared our plans to celebrate the class of 2024 on Friday, June 14th. Graduation will return to the Kaplan Arena on the William &amp; Mary campus. Ceremony times are Lafayette High School at 9:00 a.m., Warhill High School at 1:00 p.m., and Jameson High School at 5:00 p.m. Finally, I want to take a moment to formally introduce to you this evening, Dr. Daniel Kiefer. Dr. Kiefer successfully defended his dissertation yesterday, and we are very proud of you, Dr. Kiefer.
Well done. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Kiefer, and to your family, who I'm sure had to endure you, bear with you through sleepless nights to get that taken care of. So, congratulations to you all.
Make sure you turn that little plaque in, in front of you, and let them put that D in front of the M.
Are there any board member reports this evening? Yes, Ms. Donner?
I do. So, I attended our Twenty First Century Careers meeting, and we are, there are a lot of really great events upcoming. What I'd love for the viewing public is we have a mock interview event, December 11th through the 15th, across the three high schools, and we need volunteers. So, if folks would like to do that, there are places on our website to be able to volunteer for that, or you can also reach out to Sherry Thrift, and she would love to fill those slots. Additionally, there is a Career Connections Fair that is tentatively scheduled for February 8th, and that again, for those that have businesses in the area, that even just to show students what's available, or if you have internships or jobs for kids after graduation, we would love those folks in the community to come out to the Career Connections Fair. And then for our healthcare folks, on April 19th, there'll be a Health Careers Day field trip, and then a senior hiring event in late May, I'm sorry, late April, early May. So, lots of really great things that are happening for our, from a CTE and a Career Ready Advisory Committee perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Any other reports, Ms. Hundley?
I have two reports. One is for SEAC. We met and had lots of members. It's exciting to even see lots of citizens sitting off to the side, not with us, but... So, just letting people know that you can come out as a citizen, and our next meeting will be January 11th, because we will not meet in December. But reports were given that the Parks and Recs Trick or Treat for Disability Awareness went really well. Their university parent workshops had 37 attendees, and they had great feedback on their evaluations. We are planning right now for March's disability awareness. One, the teacher rep said, "Teachers, don't forget to apply for the foundation grants." It will close on November 21st, although they are trying to get that extended. Things that we're working on in the future, student-peer mentoring, parent-to-parent mentoring, especially trying to get something for bright beginning parents, working on the grading policy, and just still trying to extend out to the community the awareness of the SEAC group. That's that one. The second one was student advisory meeting. We had our first one. We had almost all our students there, and if anyone's not aware, all three high schools are represented. There's a ninth through 12th grade rep from each high school. Ms. Montpoint helped us through a fun brainstorming to get to know each other and what our intentions we'd like for the year. Many of the students talked about they would like more student-spirit-filled things, and one young man says, "We need pickleball," and more hands-on engagement. And then a follow-up from last year, one of the students said that they weren't aware of the Honors Project program and wanted some more information given to students. So, Mr. Raski came, and he told the students what the qualifications are for that, and then we concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Last chance for board reports. We're going to keep this moving. We'll move on to item 5-1, turn it over to Dr. Herron for our 10-year enrollment projection update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll newly the school board contracts with Future Think to provide enrollment estimates for the next 10 years, and we're pleased to welcome Tracy Healy, President of Future Think, to join us this evening to present the 10-year enrollment projections via Zoom. Good evening, Ms. Healy.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and appreciate the opportunity to present the enrollment projections. Going to go ahead and share my screen with the PowerPoint presentation. We can get that started. And again, for Future Think, I've been working with Williamsburg. I looked at, it's been over 20 years now doing the enrollment projections. I am located in Dublin, which is near Columbus, Ohio, and have worked with several districts all around the country on doing enrollment projections and also facility planning and redistricting for districts. In terms of looking at the enrollment projections, we really look at a couple of key areas. The first being the historical enrollment. So, here you see the chart of the last 10 years of enrollment. We've seen an increase of about just over 200 students from the 2014-15 school year. We did see, however, peak kind of in the 2017-18 and 2019-20 school years, and then due to COVID, we saw a decrease in that 2020 year, and then increases since then. So, kind of making our way back almost to pre-COVID levels. See here in the chart, as I mentioned, you know, we're kind of in our peak enrollment, had that sharp decline, and then again, returning, but not quite back to where we were prior to COVID. Each of the grade levels is first, the top line is looking at the elementary. We actually, from over that 10-year period, we actually saw a decline in the K-5 enrollment. But again, it's starting to recover, but hasn't gotten yet back to where we were in the 2019-20 school year. At the middle school level, we have, you know, reached where we were prior to COVID, and the same at the high school level. We actually saw a little bit of an increase, not much, but a slight increase. So, there is some recovery as we move forward. Terms of looking at the projections that we did last year versus the actual enrollment, this is looking at the low projection. You'll recall that we do four sets of projections, and the actual enrollment actually fell between the low and the moderate this year. So, the actual, we, is at 11,324. We projected 11,224. So, our projection was, you know, 100 less or within, you know, less than 1%. The moderate projection was also within less than 1%, and we were 65 students, too high in terms of the projection. You can see how it breaks down at each of the grade levels. The biggest difference was in the 10th grade and then the second grade. In terms of putting together the enrollment projections, we look at a combination of two methodologies. One is the cohort survival, looking at, you know, the number of students moving grade to grade year by year through the school system, and how many students are retained, you know, from, you know, say, from kindergarten to first grade the following year. Based on that, we develop a ratio that helps project future enrollment. We also look at housing in terms of how many building permits have been issued in a single year and evaluate the trends to determine the number of potential students per building permit. So, national averages are about .4 students for every single-family home. So, for every 100 homes, you can expect about 40 students. And we take a look at how the housing will impact future enrollment as well. As I mentioned, we do four projections. We do a most likely, which has been traditionally used for planning purposes, and then we do a low, which has traditionally been used for budgeting, and then we have a moderate and high. The most likely falls in between the moderate and high projections, just so for planning, you know, 10 years out, we want to look at that projection. In terms of that, we have the most likely projection, which has an increase of just under 2,000 students over that 10-year period. So, we see the elementary school increasing to just over 5,600 students. We have middle school at just over 3,200 students, and the high school at about 4,500 students, for an overall total of 13,306. At the low projection, we have fairly flat projection, an increase of about 123 students over that 10-year period. And we're really just seeing in this projection where the K-5 enrollment is just really starting to return to where it was in pre-COVID levels, and then, you know, increases again at the middle and high school level. The moderate projection has an increase of 1,360 students over that 10-year window. So, we have an elementary school enrollment of about 5,400 students, middle school at just under 3,100 students, and high school about 4,200 students. So, for a total of 12,684 students, K through 12. And then the high projection, we have an increase of 2,565 students over the 10-year period. And so, our elementary school is 5,750. We have middle school at just under 3,400 students, and then the high school at just under 4,800 students. So, for a total of just under 14,000 students. So, again, so that's, you know, kind of our low, moderate, most likely, and high projections and where they fall within. So, that's, and these are, I would say, all pretty well in line with where we were last year. Since this year's projection was very close with, between the low and the moderate, we're seeing, you know, similar patterns, close to where we were last year with last year's projections. So, I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have about the projections.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. I think we'll go to Ms. Hummel.
This is just, it could be more of a question for you or Dr. Herron. Have these low, moderate, you know, all of these projections available between James City County and Williamsburg to be able to split it out and provide that documentation to the superintendent for the different population groups based on locality?
Mrs. Hummel, I believe...
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Healy. I was going to say, I know the city of Williamsburg has requested that of Mrs. Healy and worked with her to get those projections for the city. I'm not sh, I think the county has not requested that at this moment in time.
No, I did receive some calls from the city to do that, but they did not move forward with a proposal on their end, so...
So, you just don't have that level of detail anyway to just say, "Oh, it's this, this, and this"? You don't, okay.
No, yeah, no, we just look at the overall students. I mean, that is something that, you know, can be geocoded, and that's what we talked about. So, we could look at where students live and where they attend based on their address, but that, we don't have that currently available.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ordigo?
Just a quick question, and I might have actually missed this, but were the projection, all the different projection models, were they based on the cohort survival method or the housing method?
We actually use a combination of both. So, I put together kind of the cohort method first, and then look at what's happening in terms of the housing, and then make adjustments to the cohort, so it takes into account the housing as well. So, we look at the number of building permits, the gain that we've seen from the previous year to, based on those permits, you know, using like a one-year lag time from when a building permit is issued versus when people typically move in. So, we kind of use a combination of the two.
Okay. Maybe that was said, but...
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Healy? Ms. Healy, I do have one. I seem to recall that somewhere around or trending after the COVID shutdown, we saw somewhat of a boom in live births. Is that accurate?
Yes, we did, and we pulled it up real quick.
And so, my question is, are we seeing that trend continue, or what are we seeing there?
Well, actually, I did just get the 2022 birth counts, which are still preliminary, but they had actually dropped. So, we saw, you know, previously from like 2008 through 2019, you know, the birth counts had ranged between like 750 and 850. And then in 2020, we saw a drop down to 815. And that is pretty consistent with what we saw nationwide, where there were, you know, just a low birth count nationwide and really based on COVID. So, we saw an 815 in 2020. It increased in 2021 to 904, so which had been the highest that we had seen, you know, in the last 15 years. But then the preliminary 2022 data is showing us at 727 for births. So, so last year would have been the highest, and then, or I'm sorry, 2021 would have been the highest, and then last year, the lowest birth count we've seen. And again, that data is still preliminary, but the Department of Health was able to give it to me. Under the condition, I said it was preliminary, at least twice.
I understand. No, thank you so much for that. Last call for questions for Ms. Healy before we let her go. I appreciate you being here this evening, and we always do appreciate your expertise and you spending time with us in this way to help us prepare for our work. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Good evening.
Any final thoughts, Dr. Herron, before we push on?
Nope, no, sir.
Okay, all right. I know we'll be able to put that information to good use in the months ahead, or a new board will. Moving on to item 5-2, school board evaluation tool. We won't belabor this item, this conversation, just to say for the public's knowledge that we're at that time of year where the school board, through our standard operating procedure, is required to do a school board self-evaluation. Ms. Ordigo, our vice chair, has already sent out communication to the board with that tool attached, requesting that each individual self-evaluation of the school board be sent back to her, I believe, by December 1. Was that accurate, Ms. Donner? Ordo, excuse me. And so, again, just for the listening public's information, we are, we do have that underway. And in our December work session, once the final document is compiled, we'll have a time where we'll discuss some of the salient points that are extracted from that final document. We'll move on to item 5-3, attendance and restorative center update. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last board meeting, the board requested an update on attendance and how we were doing this year, and Mr. Kason is going to provide a brief presentation this evening, and also add some information about how the restorative center is going so far this year. Good evening, Mr. Kason, Kason, I should say.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. Thank you for inviting me here this evening to provide updates on the restorative center as well as our school attendance. The restorative center opened this year with 14 students on the first day of school, 11 high school students, and three middle. Each of these students was assigned to our Refocus program. This is a six-to-nine-week program intended to assist students with behavior management. Students in the Refocus program start their day in what we are calling our morning roundup. This is where students and staff come together and discuss a variety of topics to help students be successful in the traditional educational setting.
to help students be successful in the traditional educational setting. Today, topics have included self-control, responsibility, communication, perseverance, and a host of others. Students use this time to set daily goals and come up with a list of strategies they will use that they focus on to help them meet their daily goals. Each student writes this information into their journal, which they come back to at the end of the day to chart their progress. This allows each student to monitor their own development while they're in the program. Students are also provided a daily point sheet in the morning roundup. The point sheet is unique to each student with different skills that they focus on during the day. Focus areas include interpersonal relationships, following directions, remaining on task, or a combination of each. Students have a target point goal for each day that they have to meet in order to participate in extracurricular activities. So far, extracurricular activities have included yoga, gardening, game time, ice cream socials, and others. In addition to earning daily and weekly incentives, students must also meet a minimum total point requirement, indicating that they are making adequate progress in the center before a transition meeting will be scheduled with their comprehensive school. The initial transition meeting will take place up to two weeks before the student returns and includes staff from both the restorative center, the comprehensive school, as well as the student and the parent. It's not all fun and games, though. The bulk of the day is dedicated towards academics. Students remain in their assigned classes from their comprehensive school, completing coursework through Canvas. The teachers at the restorative center support the students with individual and small group tutoring. This model allows the students to transition into and out of the center more efficiently while maintaining their place in the curriculum. The next phase of the restorative center will be opening of the reset program. The reset program will be similar to the refocus program, but on a smaller scale. This program is intended for students who are on short-term suspension and will remain at the restorative center for ten days or less. We are currently in the process of completing the staffing to bring this program online during the second marking period. Student attendance remains an area of focus for the school division. As you may recall, it was about this time last year when a review of our attendance data showed a disturbing trend, that despite being two years removed from the initial COVID closure, attendance numbers were dropping rather than rebounding. At the end of the first marking period, the daily attendance rate was down a full two points from the previous school year. Instead of waiting and monitoring the trend in hopes of improvement, the division took action, including outreach. Articles detailing the importance of school attendance appeared in the division newsletter. A template was provided to schools on how they could include include their attendance data in their individual school newsletters, along with information about how attendance impacts school accreditation. An attendance committee was formed with representation from each school in the division as well as central office staff. This committee looked at our current attendance practices as well as those of surrounding divisions and made recommendations to senior leadership that became our new regulation J E D dash R. The division also partnered with Project Engage, a VDOE-funded program that provides support and mentorship to students with attendance concerns. We improved our collaboration with our community partners to make changes to the MDT process or the multidisciplinary team process. The multidisciplinary team is a partnership with community agencies, including court services, social services, colonial behavior health, and others to provide support to students who are considered truant under the Code of Virginia. We have provided multiple trainings to staff on procedures as well as provided resources from agencies such as Attendance Works and Everyone Graduates to help each school promote positive attendance practices. What has been the result? Through the end of October, our data shows that overall attendance numbers are tracking in the right direction. On this first slide, you will note that our average daily attendance, represented by the light blue line, has been holding steady at or above ninety-five percent through the first two months of the school year. That is three and a half points higher than the same time last year. With that said, this next graph shows that the number of absences has been on the rise each week, with a slight decline in the final week of the first marking period. Information that we are receiving from school staff is that the rise in absences has been due to cold and flu season. This does match trends from previous school years. As you can see, even with the current rise in daily absences, overall absences are down nineteen percent compared to the same time last year. It is important to note here that unexcused absences have risen twenty-two percent from this time last year. However, as we change vacation days from excused to unexcused absences, that would account for the difference. On this next slide, the number of students who are considered chronically absent, again represented by the light blue line, remain below the target line of fifteen percent, set by the Virginia Department of Education. The target line is represented by the green dotted line. For reference purposes, the red dotted line at the top of the chart represents the point where a school or a division is at risk of losing accreditation based on attendance. Last school year, we exceeded the fifteen percent target in early September and never got back below that line despite interventions. Our ending chronic absentee count from last year was sixteen point three nine percent, which is represented by the triangle at the end of the chart. This slide represents chronic absence by level. On this slide, the green indicates students with perfect attendance through the end of October. Blue are students who had one to two absences. Purple are those students with three to four absences. And the orange are students with five or more absences. The students represented by the orange are considered chronically absent. These positive trends that we are seeing this year are due to the immense work being done at each school. As you can see from this slide, through the first nine weeks of the school year, there have been over two thousand five hundred letters sent home, over four hundred and twenty attendance meetings, more than two hundred attendance plans, and twelve students have been referred to the multidisciplinary team. Each of these sports supports are both time and manpower-intensive, but critical to ensure that all students are present to learn. Our work is not done. Currently, we are working with EduPoint, the vendor for our student information system, to create new reports that make it easier for schools to monitor their daily attendance. We are also working with the vendor to automate our attendance letters so that they may be sent home electronically. This will expedite our process. We are also in the process of forming a standing attendance committee that will meet regularly to review our data, analyze trends, explore best practices, and make recommendations to senior leadership. We recently completed the memorandum of understanding with Check and Connect, a regional program offered to surrounding school divisions by York County Department of Social Services that further supports our multidisciplinary team process. And we are continuing outreach to all stakeholders, reinforcing the importance of daily school attendance. This is ongoing with specific messaging sent out around holiday time. In the meantime, we are continuing to monitor attendance daily to make sure that we are responsive to any challenges or any changes. I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kason. To the board, any questions for Mr. Kason on these two reports? The attendance and then also the restorative center update. We'll come to Ms. Donner, then Ms. Hunley.
Thank you for your report. I'm curious of any feedback from the students who are currently in the restorative center, in the restorative center and what they're thinking or saying, or parent, or parent feedback.
Well, they don't love the point sheet, I'll say that, because it has them focused on their behavior. But the longer that they're on it, the more they're realizing that it's a tool intended to help them rather than to suppress them. So they're kind of getting used to it. Parents, we've invited them to any time they want to come and view the program and to see what their students are doing each day. We've had a couple, not a lot of feedback from them, but we've invited schools to come as well. We've gotten some feedback from the schools that they appreciate the efforts that the staff has done to help with their students.
Ms. Hunley, and then Ms. Young.
Okay, so that was one of my questions too. And waiting lists, how many students do we have still in the wings?
Right now, we just did transition. We just moved several students out. We had students that we moved into the GED program because they found that that was their focus. We had some that went to Learning Lab, and we had a number that went back to their homeschools. So we are actually, we should not have a waiting list. We have students that we're getting ready to bring in here in the next few days so that they can complete their six to nine weeks.
Ms. Young, and then Dr. Beers.
Right. I mean, I'm interested in the restorative program. Is, does any of that pertain to attendance? Or is that just discipline, behavior issues?
So it it's both. So the restorative program has the refocus and the reset. The refocus is managing the students who have the social, emotional, or behavior management issues. And it keeps them in school. It counts towards daily attendance. It's a positive indicator rather than negative with them being on homebound or somewhere else. And when the reset program opens, those will be students who are suspended. So instead of that suspension counting against our chronic absenteeism, it'll count towards our daily attendance. So it'll improve our absentee numbers.
Okay. And then my other question is, there is an MOU of Check and Connect to support the multidisciplinary team interventions. Can you explain a little bit more about that? How that, how is that going to work?
It's similar to the project engage that we started last year where instead of the whole scale, anybody who was chronically absent, we will, those who have been sent through MDT, which is the collaboration with court services, colonial behavior health, social services, it assigns them a monitor or a mentor, and that mentor works with the parent and the student to develop very specific strategies for getting to school. It, they sign a memorandum or they sign an agreement with them where the mentor can check their daily attendance. And then they can provide that feedback. They can look to overcome any impediments. Basically, it's case management for those students with chronic absenteeism. And it's local versus the national that the project engages.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, the only question I have is, I know that several schools have been actively, have have developed and are and are employing strategies already to try to reduce the chronic absenteeism. And some of them are quite, so the question I have, will they abandon that? And will this replace it? Or would this be, can can that be incorporated? Or, because there, there, it's, you know, I always worry about something that's coming in and being in place and being placed when in fact some, there may be some things that are already going on that might be, that might be quite successful. And I, yeah, I'm a little concerned about that.
Right. So if you're talking Check and Connect, sir?
Sorry?
Are you talking about the Check and Connect replacing that?
What?
Are you talking to the Check and Connect replacing what's happening at the schools?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir. It won't replace that at all. So the first level of intervention is done at the school. Those, those students who are not successful at the school are then sent through the multidisciplinary team. And we use Check and Connect once they get to that level, which is district-wide plus community partners. So they, if they're being successful at the school level, they'll never make it to the multidisciplinary team, and we won't have to involve Check and Connect at all. Those are just for those that basically five to ten percent who have not been successful at the school interventions.
Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing the, so the, so the school. Maybe I haven't raised, asked the question the right way. But I know that schools have, not all of them. And that's, you know, that's one of the issues I have with this whole thing is each, each school has been not been doing exactly the same. In other words, there has not been a system-wide approach. Some have been more successful than others. And and I'm just, I want to make sure it doesn't, it isn't ignored or or somehow gets either incorporated. Because I don't want them to have to do, it's like double duty.
Right.
Kind of thing, you know, and, and, and I'm not talking about the high schools. The middle schools. I'm talking about the elementary schools. And I, it, I, it probably is, it's easier to make contact with parents when you're in elementary grades than, you know, as you go farther up, it becomes more and more difficult.
Dr. Beers, I think, Dr. Heron has a response.
Dr. Beers, I think you're referring to an elementary school as a point system as well. The restorative center is really focused on middle and high school now.
Right.
It doesn't involve elementary students. But any things implemented by the school, if they don't work and a student is still absent or still having behavioral issues, then they would go to the restorative center. So it doesn't supersede anything at the school and doesn't take away anything from the school. And this is all middle and high school at the center.
Well, I guess the other part of that, are school counselors involved in in the development or implementation or providing feedback on these?
Yes, sir. So we have a school counselor that's assigned to us at the restorative center, Ms. Martin. She's phenomenal. She coordinates and sends weekly with all the school counselors from the high schools and middle schools for the students who are there. And for those students who have transitioned back, she goes each week and follows every student for a period of at least six weeks to make sure that they're making progress. And during those meetings, it's Ms. Martin, the counselor from the school, and then if they're available, an administrator from the school as well.
Okay, because I've always been concerned, especially at the high school level. Is counselors primarily focus on, and there aren't that many, and they have, they have a huge number of students. And they, they spend an awful lot of time on scheduling. All the, and and so I, I'm always concerned that they may not have time to do some of these kinds of things. Whereas at the elementary level, they do have time to do some of those kinds of things. So how do you, are you working on that?
Well, like I said, Ms. Martin, when she goes each week, her meetings are with the counselors for those students. So the counselors are involved in those direct, so these are the skills that we worked on with the student. This is how we've advised them to incorporate it working into the program. And then we, she maintains that connection with them about, student is struggling, these are some of the things that we can try next. So they're in those meetings, and they're also invited anytime they want to come out and work with their student while they're at the restorative center to help with that transition back as well.
So, Dr. Beers, this is unique because we just don't bring students in, keep them in a different place, and send them straight back with nothing. It's totally connected to the school environment and transitioning well back into the school environment. Plus, we are so fortunate that the board approved and 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 we got funded a counselor ratio of two fifty to one. So now our counselors have more time to actually counsel, and we actually track the amount of time they spend counseling as opposed to administrative duties. So we really are, have got a process in place to to really help with that as well.
Okay.
Dr. Beers, if I may, I've got two questions. Actually, Mr. Kason, you just answered one of mine and wanted to hear you explain what happens after the two-week transition meeting, the student's back in his homeschool setting. So I appreciate you explaining the follow-up and the further engagement that the student experiences when he's back home or he shares back home to their school. On page thirteen, for the attendance report, my page thirteen, I'm not sure what it is on your, your, your slideshow here, chronically absent, talked about the green, excuse me, the, the red line being that threshold. I think that's twenty-five percent. Yeah. And I think you suggested that that was what we're seeing in this chart is as a division. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
My question, maybe, maybe not simple, but are any of our schools near to that threshold?
The.
The division?
Near the twenty-five percent, yes, sir. We've had some that bordered the twenty at the end of last year, but nobody that was at the, that was at the red line. Everybody was within the yellow or the green.
And, Mr. Dahl, we're actually this year on the line at the bottom beneath the green line.
There's no one school, I guess, was my, my only question. No one school. That's an outlier irrespective of where the division is. Okay, cool.
I think every school is held to the same standard. And if extra resources are needed at a particular school, we would certainly be there to to help. And that's been monitored by Mr. Kason as well.
Ms. Origo?
Just, I think, quick questions. How, do we know how many of of our chronically absent students are due on average to suspensions versus not coming to school on their own?
So it wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily be coded chronically absent. In the Code of Virginia, if a student is under suspension, that counts as an excused absence because we're not allowing them to be to school rather than it being, well, actually, it does count chronically absent. The students right now who are considered chronically absent, there's none of them that due to suspension are at the risk of suspension. Maybe ten students total, and those were ones who received ten-day suspensions due to altercations. So you've got a handful.
Okay, and those, those, that handful can go to this, the idea is that they would go to the center instead of staying at home, and then it wouldn't count as absent at all.
Right, that's when we get our staffing fully up for the, for the reset program, yes, ma'am.
My, my only concern would be like, is there a hesitation to suspend someone who should be suspended so that it doesn't count against attendance? No, okay.
I did.
Ms. Hunley, yes.
I did think of one more question. For our students that are in the non-transportation zones, has there been anything, has their attendance been pretty steady?
That, unfortunately, I have not tracked that. I can, I can look into that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hummel, did I see your hand?
This is, maybe you've explained it before, but if somebody.
is in the the center and then does not cooperate at all, like is is what happens to those students? Do they just go to out of school suspension?
No, so we work with our coordinator of student services, Mr. Bird, as well as the school, and we have follow up meetings. We've got we've got one student right now that we're kind of in that boat. He's beyond his six weeks. He's not making the progress, we hope. So we're holding the additional meetings. We're putting in additional supports. And if it gets to the point, then we would look at other options for placement, not necessarily sending him back to his homeschool. If he's not successful with us, we're not going to just congratulations. Here you go.
That answer your question, Miss Hume?
I guess I'm just wondering what happens in that case to the student, like what is a student that you can't rehabilitate? You can't send him back to his homeschool. What happens to that student?
There's a couple of different options. We can keep them there longer. We can look at homebound options. We can look at other placements, including enterprise. Basically, the team would come together and determine why they're not being successful and what we think the next best step is.
Thank you.
Mr. Kass, and I do appreciate your time in both of these reports. Got your hands full, but we appreciate your expertise. Thank you, sir.
Dahl, if I could just thank Mr. Kass and all of the staff that have been involved in the program and monitoring attendance, they've done an incredible job. And I think we really are finding a way to meet students' needs that we couldn't before. So thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And I'll toss it right back to you for the strategic plan update, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, Mr. Baker brings us information regarding compensation goals for the following year. I know there's lots of different information following on some of our discussion of the budget last year. You'll find some differences in the information being brought this year. So I'm going to hand right over to Mr. Baker to take us through the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board and Dr. Heron. Tonight is an update of Goal Five of the strategic plan. As part of Goal Five, we want to recruit high quality staff and retain the division's exemplary workforce by creating an environment where transparency and trust are the norm. Tonight, I'll be focusing on the strategies of recruitment and compensation. As part of Goal Five, we have a strategy to strengthen recruitment to attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pools, specifically our primary aim is to be fully staffed on the first day of school. We continue to face historic staffing challenges and a drop in the teacher preparation program. But in spite of that, we had some success. On the first day of school this year, we were ninety nine point five percent staff for classroom teachers. And we continue to hire minority teachers and counselors. This year, we hired nineteen compared to twenty three last year. And we have an ongoing focus to have our teacher workforce more closely mirror our student population. Last year, we analyzed the hiring trends over a five year period, and we developed a staffing plan. And we use this data to determine the number of early offers we would make. For this year, we had thirty three candidates accept early offers teach for teaching assignments for this fall, and we had offered seventy two. We also hired a hundred and twenty eight instructional staff before the end of May. It is important to begin the hiring process as soon as possible in order to get the candidate committed to WJCC public schools. Further, we released contracts earlier and revised the intent process to get a better information sooner. We requested that the principals engage in state interviews with staff that were uncertain with the hope of retaining them. In addition to our ongoing recruitment goals and efforts at historically black colleges and universities, I continue to be on the Virginia State College of Education Advisory Board and meet with them each quarter. And again, we want to increase WJCC's exposure and access to qualified candidates of color. Also, regarding support and retention of our new teachers, the Supervisor of Organizational Development and Equity developed a mentoring program for our new teachers, WJCC Launch. We began the hiring process for teachers back in January of twenty twenty three. And we also had hired a hundred and twenty eight instructional staff before the end of May. And again, it's important for the hiring process to begin as soon as possible to get the candidates committed to WJCC public schools. In order to get the best teacher candidates, we need to continue to push early offers for teachers, and we strive to have in the majority of our teacher staffing completed before June. Additional recruiting activities included this year, we held four job fairs, including our last one on July twenty sixth as a final our final fair to push for the start of the school year. We offered teachers and support staff early hiring contracts at these job fairs. And we attended various university job fairs, including seven historically black colleges and universities. We added a Facebook Instagram ad campaign that reached over a hundred and thirteen thousand people with resulted in over one thousand unique clicks. And last week, we hosted our first job fair of this year on November the sixth for with an emphasis on our support staff. The second strategy of Goal Five that we'll discuss tonight is to focus on being the leader in the region on employee salaries. While we continue to make progress, there's still more work to be done with respect to regional competitiveness. We want to thank the board for offering a seven percent raise last year that allowed us to boost our starting teacher pay. For the twenty twenty three twenty twenty, excuse me, for the twenty twenty two twenty twenty three school year, our bachelor's degree entry level started at fifty thousand dollars. For the twenty three twenty four school year, our bachelor's degree entry level was raised to fifty two thousand seven hundred dollars. And as a result, WJCC is third out of six in our region for the bachelor's degree entry level, and we're worth three hundred dollars of being first. And please note, we hired thirty seven teachers this year with bachelor's degree only that had zero years of teaching experience. While we've closed the gap for the starting salaries, we continue to lag behind the region in the milestone years. It shows how we compare in different milestone years on the bachelor scale. And this slide also shows that we are falling further behind the regional average, especially at the twenty five year mark where we are five point four four percent below the average. For the master's entry level, we now rank third out of six. And this ranking is significant because approximately half of our new teachers we hired last year have at least a masters. On the master's entry level scale, we hired eighteen teachers at the entry level with zero years' experience with the masters. This slide shows how we compare in different milestone years on the master scale. And this slide also shows that we are falling further behind the regional average, especially at the twenty year mark where we are seven point two nine percent below the average and at the twenty five year mark where we are six point eight three percent below the average. While the majority of our new hires are in the first five years of service and experience, we must continue to look at our instructional pay scales with respect to experience experience years between ten and twenty five. And as I just shared, we're struggling to keep pace with our regional competitors on this front. Moreover, fifty percent of our teachers leaving WJCC were in the ten to twenty five year years of experience range. While we don't do not always know exactly the rationale for departure, we do know that salary is often has an impact. In order to address competitiveness and compression in our teacher scale, an additional teacher scale adjustment, along with any potential percent raise, could be given and should be considered. This would help us close the gap on these milestone years and get closer to the regional average. Compensation initiatives that we have previously completed included internal equity studies for our bus drivers, transportation staff and technology staff that was implemented in the twenty twenty two twenty twenty three school year. For this year, twenty twenty three twenty twenty four, we implemented a internal equity study that impacted all of our teacher assistants and custodians. And for next year, twenty twenty four twenty twenty five, we plan to consider an internal equity study that would address our clerical staff and school security officers. Others considerations for next year include looking at our lowest earners on the support staff scale. We currently have a hundred and one support vacancies with the majority of these being bus aides, cafeteria workers, custodians and bus drivers. And our teacher vacancies have increased since the first day of school from four to eleven. And please know, please know these vacancies are being covered by contracted teachers or current teachers getting paid extra for giving up their planning period or by substitutes and long term substitutes. We need to continue to work on our salary schedules to ensure we become more competitive in order to hire and retain staff at all levels. In looking at our entry level positions, it's essential that we benchmark our wages versus primary competitors. On this slide, we show the minimum for our grade four, which includes our custodians, bus aides and cafeteria workers. And we currently have thirty three cafeteria openings, seven custodian openings and nine bus aid openings. For the sake of comparison, we included the starting scale information for James City County and the College of William and Mary. Our current starting pay is thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. To increase all staff in grade four, one dollar an hour to two dollars an hour would cost between two hundred and eleven thousand dollars and four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars annually just for the salaries.
Did you say that one more time, sir?
Sure. And I do have a summary slide at the end.
Sure.
To increase staff on grade four from one dollar an hour to two dollar an hour would cost between two hundred and eleven thousand dollars to four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars just for the salaries. I'm sorry. On this slide, we show the minimum for our grade six, which includes our teacher assistants, general education, special education and preschool. And this staff, the staff in this grade have less than sixty credit hours of college credit. Our current starting pay for grade six is fifteen dollars and seventeen cents an hour. And to increase all the staff in grade six, one dollar an hour to to two dollars an hour would cost between ninety one thousand dollars and one hundred and eighty three thousand dollars annually just for the salaries. And we currently have thirteen openings for all of our TA positions. On this slide, we show the minimum for our grade seven, which includes all of our teacher assistants, again, general education, special education and preschool. And the staff in this grade have six credit hours of college credit or have passed the parapro exam. And the grade seven also includes other school based clerical positions such as receptionist, media assistant, attendance associate and ISS aides. Our current starting salary for grade seven is sixteen dollars and twenty three cents an hour. To increase all the staff in grade seven, one dollar an hour to two dollars an hour would cost between three hundred and four thousand dollars to six hundred thousand dollars annually just for salaries. On this slide, we show the minimum for our grade eight, which includes our bus drivers. In this area, we currently have twenty seven vacancies. And please note, twenty five of those are being covered by the ever driven contract. The other hourly comparisons are for CDL bus driver positions. Again, for comparisons, we included the starting rate for WADA. To increase all the staff in grade eight, one dollars an hour to two dollars an hour would cost between one hundred thousand, one hundred and seven thousand dollars and two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars annually just for salaries. To summarize the previous four slides and looking to enhance our hourly rate for key members of our support staff, we could provide the following possible adjustment ranges. If we provide a one dollar an hour to two dollar an hour adjustment to the lowest end of our support scale, that would cost between seven hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars and one million, four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars just in salary costs that would be combined with any percent raise that was given. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Baker, Ms. Young?
Right. I I think I ask this question all the time, but did it did all of our teachers get the seven percent raise?
Yes.
And and that still didn't bring us up so that we were on par with the others' school districts as far as bachelors, masters, it seemed like we were falling short in that you said that ten to twenty year zone?
Some of our competitors also gave similar raises.
And they were already ahead of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Oh gee.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hunley?
This is just an ask. Again, I've asked this every year. I would still like to see when you do or takes staff to historically black colleges that teachers that would like to secure a sub and have a sub can go just in case there are questions. Or even if you have some that are locally here, there may be some teachers that would like to come, wear their shirt and and speak with teachers. And you can open that up to Virginia Tech, ODU. But I would like to see that. I think that would be helpful with recruiting. There's nothing like being able to speak to someone that's that's doing the work. Nothing against the administrators or people offering the contracts, but it would be nice to talk to a person that teaches in the division.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortega?
I have a hypothetical question. It'd be possible not now, but to see if we took every single, every single scale that we just looked at or if we take all of all of the salaries and put them at the highest, you know, to outbid our our the highest competitor at every level to see what that total number would come out to like in a budget. Do you know what I'm saying?
If we were number one in all this?
Number one in the region across the board. What is that total number?
What I can work on calculating that for you.
Just for clarity, I think that you would want us to pick a number also that our competitor may utilize as well. Because once the the scale starts to slide to the right, we're not the only ones. We're not. We're not making salary adjustments in a vacuum. So how is there a particular method? You want us to pick a number and show you that percentage and
No, and
Calculate it out?
Could probably work of current data and then that might determine the percentage we would have to give across the board plus some of these adjustments to be competitive. But I think we could we would have to use current to do that analysis first.
Doesn't mean that someone else wouldn't then also out outrage it, but I just want to have a picture number in my head of what it would take to be number one in the region.
Lot of money.
Obviously, I know that. And it's not. I'm not saying that it's
And then to stay there.
Right. And I'm not saying that it's doable. I just I I just want to know what it is.
Great idea. Yeah, thank you.
We'll work on it. Ms. Donner?
That one million, one point four billion dollar number, like how much of a budget increase would that be on like our current salary base, that one percent, two percent?
For the whole salary, you mean for that individual employee or?
So if you were going, I think on your summary slide, if you go up one one slide, the it says that it is that it's that the total estimate to support all these adjustments would be between seven hundred and thirteen thousand and one point four million. And so what is that as a terms of like a percent in increase to our our current budget? So is that one percent more on our current budget or?
Our current one, one percent. We could probably easier suggest that if we do one percent for every single staff member, it's about one point two ish, somewhere in that region. A percentage of our total budget, it's
I don't mean the total of our of our salaries.
Of our salaries.
This is so basically like a one percent more on top of salaries would
As compared to our current budget?
As compared to our current budget.
Okay, we could get that for you. Ms. Yuen, did you get that? Okay.
I did have a question and and you were intentional about reminding us that in each of these grades, these one to two dollar bumps are just for salaries. You were intentional about reminding us of that. What's not implicated in in this exercise that maybe we should be aware of?
I mean, other costs from like other insurance and VRS and and FICA, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
Ms. Yuen could answer what else what goes if the salary goes up, what else goes up, Ms. Yuen?
Right. And and if there's not an answer to that now, because it's been presented, it it would be helpful to see that in an SBQ as well, but Ms. Yuen?
It would be the FICA and the VRS on top of that. So it just depends on which which VRS plan the individual positions are in. So the percentage could change. But we can get that information for you.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Hume?
So we were having a little side conversation here. So the teacher pay scales, when you're adjusting the steps to give in 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 order to do that, it would cost more money. I think there were several of us during the budget, the last budget discussion that were really were really trying to determine what is the best way to get, to make our teachers' salaries more competitive. And so I do think, just moving forward, I'll be off the board, but I think these adjusting of the pay scales is the direction to go when we're, we're talking about, you know, you're talking about blanket across-the-board raises, which is, of course, you've got to do that at some point, but then this adjusting teacher pay scales, I think, can directly address some of the inequities we see, you know, for retention, that's all.
Absolutely. And that's why we're looking at this early this year and looking, really analyzing the numbers of teachers who left and the numbers we gained within those ranges to see what would be appropriate in terms of adding a number of dollars to a salary rather than a percentage raise on top of whatever percentage raise is given.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question about, to see the bus driver's minimum hourly rate.
Microphone, Dr. Beers?
Dr. Beers, we can't hear you.
Yeah, it's like, it's, oh, sorry. Between, between what we pay and what Hampton pays, it's, it's like four, four dollars an hour more. I, the question I have, you probably can't answer this, is does Hampton have the same bus driver shortage that we have?
I think the whole country has the same.
Even though, even though they're, they're, they're paying them more than four dollars an hour than we are, it's still, where's, where's the number where you get them to come back? Or is there no number? It's like, it doesn't make any difference. They don't want to be bus drivers.
I think the shortage is so great that every time you put a number up, someone else is going to come in on top of it. If you remember, two years ago or a year ago, the board purposely moved every bus driver from a seventh, grade seven, to grade eight, and put up all bus driver salaries. And then we did an equity study. We looked at all of our drivers and transportation staff and moved everybody internally to where they should be, and many got an increase in salary through that as well. But looking at our, our competitors tonight, they've moved beyond us again. It's very challenging, and we need them.
I guess the other thing that I thought about, and obviously this would, our funding partners would have to be part of this discussion, is, is to create a five-year plan where, okay, we can't do it in, in one year, but we're going to crank it. We're going to crank it over the next five years because it's absolutely essential that we have bus drivers. We have these, all of these support people that are, they're absolutely critical for the operation of this, of the school. I know, I know, we, you know, we need to always be aware of the need to make salary raises with teachers, but it's just, I don't know, that just, and maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe that wouldn't help, but I just, I keep thinking, there's got to be a plan. There's got to be, unless, you know, it's a, it's just a battle we can't win because there just aren't enough people who want to be bus drivers, unless they could get forty thousand a year, then they probably would.
Dr. Beers, I think that's an excellent idea. I think when we lay everything out and what it would take to do it all, and then we wait on the, the governor's budget, and we see what, what increase he's recommending in the General Assembly for, for the next year and the year after, then we need to put the whole total figure together. And if we are unable to be funded to the total amount, whatever the board wants to push forward from all of this, then we may want to go back and say, okay, what can we do next year? What can we do the year before to get to where we need to be? So I think that, that will be a natural consequence of laying everything out at the front this year and really asking the board, where do you want, what do you want to prioritize? Or do you want to prioritize everything because, because we need to?
I guess the other thing is, it, it strikes me that the governor, the Department of Education doesn't realize, this is a real crisis for us, not having enough bus drivers. Because I, and God love them, I, I know their parents out there that are, you know, they're holding it in, they, they know we're having a tough time with that, but they, you know, they're, they're, they're waiting till way after five o'clock to pick up their kids. And I, I don't know, it's like, I, it's, all the focus is on the teachers, and I, and I understand that. It is. I mean, but that's really important. But this supports staff.
Yeah.
I never hear the governor say anything about that. It's always about the teachers. And it's like, we can't forget, somehow, they're going to have to pony up so that we can continue to operate the schools. It's not, we can have the teachers, but if we can't operate the schools because we don't have the personnel to do it, then that's a real crisis.
Dr. Beers, I think, and maybe I speak for a majority of the board here, what I appreciate about this presentation, and I think you do too, is that the superintendent's brought us these adjustments in these grades that are not only for teachers, or for many other facets and aspects of running a successful school division. Want to continue to move forward with our board meeting, are, were there any other comments or questions as relates to the strategic plan update? Appreciate you sharing this, Dr. Heron, with us as we look forward to January, which is coming really quickly, and current board members and newly-elected board members getting a chance to see this early, as they're going to have a chance to consider these things in the future.
Mr. Chair, I'd just make one more comment. We've put a lot of numbers on the table tonight, but they are just thoughts and ideas, they're not recommendations. That's why in Simmons's, we've given a range because we don't know what's possible, to try to see where, where the board would desire to go in terms of, of budget and what eventually that I'll recommend for the actual budget. But I do, we talked tonight about the number of positions that are not filled right now. And I do want to give a shout-out to custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance workers, everyone in our system right now who, we're making it work, and people are making it happen every single day, and they're doing double duty. So thank you to those listening tonight for the job that we're still managing to do. We appreciate you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Heron. I'm going to let you hold the floor as we move on to our proposed agenda items, looking at a presentation of the fiscal year twenty-five through thirty-four CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and school board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-five through thirty-four. This afternoon, Ms. Ewing will present not only the proposed plan, but provide context and background for the recommendations, including information on how enrollment projections just presented this evening are impacting the proposed capital improvement plan. Let me start with a few significant facts. High school enrollment is projected to remain fairly static. The renovation of the nine-hundred billion at Lafayette High School has been designed, and construction will start in June twenty-twenty-four. This will provide additional flexible space at the high school level. With additional high school classrooms at Lafayette, we will remain about ninety percent capacity at the high school level for a number of years. Therefore, high school classroom additions at both Jamestown and Warhile High Schools have been removed beyond the five-year funded plan. We will continue to revisit, revisit our additional space needs annually when we review updated enrollment projections every single year, as this can, of course, change. Proof that the middle school remains fairly static, therefore, the request for adding classroom space to James Blair remains outside the ten-year plan. Currently, we have trailers at all elementary schools except Matoka. Thirteen in total, with Stonehouse having four trailers housing eight classrooms and over one-hundred percent capacity. The bright beginnings pre-K centers are on the fast track to open in the fall of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. This will relieve the overcrowding at our elementary schools and allow twenty-six classrooms currently in thirteen trailers to be moved back into the elementary schools. With enrollment remaining static at the elementary level and the opening of two pre-K centers, we have moved the request for an elementary school out beyond the ten-year funded plan. The design of the pre-K space is in its final stages, with construction fully funded scheduled to start in fiscal year twenty-four. The two new pre-K centers combined will serve five-hundred students, that's one-hundred more than we currently serve in our elementary schools. Of note, enrollment in pre-K or bright beginnings this year is higher than it has ever been at this stage in the year, with three-hundred-and-sixty-two, sixty-three students enrolled and twenty-six pending enrollments. There are only three-hundred-and-ninety-five spaces in total, so we are almost full this year already. So it's quite likely that the pre-K centers will be fully used in their first year of operation. We are really excited to open these spaces just in time. We are grateful to our funding partners for supporting the additional space, and we plan to share the design at the joint meeting on December first for all to enjoy and appreciate. At this point, Ms. Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, will take us through the presentation that focuses mainly on fiscal year twenty, twenty-five. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening to Mr. Chair, members of the board. This evening, I'll be sharing with you the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-five through thirty-four with a focus on fiscal year twenty-five. The information presented this evening represents that of a working document that will evolve until the school board's approval in December and possibly even until the final adoption in May. The estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include ten percent for A and E, five percent for contingency, and the cost estimates within the five years have been adjusted by six percent due to the current volatile market. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, for example, updated enrollment projections or projects needed for safety reasons. Our funding partners adopt a five-year plan, but we develop a ten-year plan, which enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five-year plan, and also gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year twenty-five. I'll review the changes for fiscal year twenty-five from the adopted fiscal year twenty-four five-year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current ten-year plan. Our ten-year enrollment projections were shared earlier this evening, and before we discuss the CIP plan, I would like to review our enrollment projections from last year in comparison to our current year enrollment. Our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two enrollment was eleven-thousand-three-oh-eight, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of eleven-thousand-two-hundred-twenty-four to a high of eleven-thousand-five-thirty-seven. Our actual enrollment for this year ended up between the low and moderate projection at eleven-thousand-three-twenty-four, which is represented by the blue horizontal line on the graph, an overall increase of sixteen students as compared to last year. If you recall, for the last couple of years, our actual enrollment has been above the high projection. So it appears that enrollment has started leveling off from the increases we've seen the past couple of years after the COVID pandemic. This slide shows a comparison of our high school enrollment to the projection. On September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, enrollment was three-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of three-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-nine to a high of three-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty. High school enrollment increased by only nine students this year to three-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-nine as represented by the blue line on the graph. This table shows future things low projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for high schools. Lafayette is currently at ninety-four percent capacity or one-thousand-two-hundred-forty-one students, and is projected to remain around ninety-three percent for the next couple of years, then start declining each year. Jamestown is currently over-capacity at one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two students and is projected to remain above one-hundred percent throughout the next, most of the next ten years. Warhile's current enrollment is one-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-eight or ninety percent capacity and is projected to decline slightly each year over the next ten years. Overall, high school capacity is currently at ninety-five percent for the current year and is expected to remain stable the next couple of years, then decrease slightly. The design for renovations at Lafayette are almost complete, with construction expected to start this summer. The renovation will add an additional two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty seats of capacity, which will, will bring overall high school capacity down to ninety percent or less. Due to the various programs that high school students have available to them, such as New Horizons and Governor's School, all students do not spend their entire day within the high schools, so we have placed the classroom expansions at Jamestown and Warhile just outside of the five-year plan in fiscal years thirty and thirty-one. We will continue reviewing this each year as updated enrollment information is available. This slide shows a comparison of our middle school enrollment to the projection. Our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two enrollment was two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-five, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of two-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-one to a high of two-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-seven. We actually ended up just under the high projection for this year at two-thousand-six-ninety-two, which is represented by the blue horizontal line. This is an overall increase of twenty-seven middle school students as compared to last This table shows future things low projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for middle schools. Overall, middle school capacity is currently at eighty-six percent and is not expected to reach ninety percent until beyond the next ten years. Based on this, phase two of James Blair would not be needed until beyond this ten-year plan. This will be reevaluated each year as updated enrollment data becomes available. This slide shows a comparison of our elementary school enrollment to the projection. On September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, enrollment was four-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-three, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-four to a high of four-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty. We actually ended up right at the low projection with four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-three elementary students, which is represented by the blue horizontal line. This is a decrease of twenty students compared to last year. This table shows the elementary low projected enrollment with pre-K added. Overall, we are currently at ninety-three-point-two percent capacity. James River is at ninety-seven percent capacity, and Stonehouse is at one-hundred-seven percent capacity. All elementary schools have trailers except for Matoka to assist, to assist with space needs. Trailers are not reflected in the effective capacity in this table as they are a short-term solution to address space needs. You can see, without additional space, that elementary schools would remain between ninety-three percent and ninety-eight percent capacity over the next ten years. But design for two pre-K centers is currently underway, with construction expected to start this summer. Based on this timeline, there would be dedicated pre-K centers beginning in fiscal year twenty-six, which will free up space within the elementary schools. This table reflects updated capacity for the elementary schools with the current pre-K classrooms being utilized beginning in fiscal year twenty-six for a K-two class, which would accommodate twenty students per classroom. Comparing this new capacity with the low elementary projection from this year, elementary schools would be at an overall capacity in fiscal year twenty-six of around eighty-four percent, but will remain under ninety percent capacity throughout fiscal year thirty-four. Matthew Whaley and Stonehouse will be over one-hundred percent capacity in fiscal year twenty-six when the pre-K centers will open, and James River will be at ninety-nine percent capacity. The division will need to go through a redistricting process in fiscal year twenty-five in preparation for the opening of the pre-K centers. Based on these enrollment projections, elementary capacity will not reach ninety percent during the next ten years, so a tenth elementary school is not included in the CIP plan. As stated earlier in the CIP presentation, the county focuses on projects for the next fiscal year, and our construction estimates are gathered the year prior to county funding. Estimates provided for any projects in years two through ten are placeholders and may change because of natural economic forces like inflation, labor shortages, supply chain issues, or other factors that persist longer than anticipated. Cost changes for projects in fiscal year twenty-five from the adopted fiscal year twenty-four amount total, one-point-one million as outlined on this slide. The design of two pre-K centers is underway, and we expect construction to start in late spring. As part of last year's CIP request, we had requested construction funds of thirty-nine-point-seven million, but only twenty-eight-point-eight million was approved by the localities. The architect has provided us with an updated cost estimate for the two centers, which is forty-two million. Based on this information, we are requesting additional funds in the amount of thirteen-point-two million to be able to complete the two centers, which will help to alleviate space constraints at our elementary schools. And if you... And if you recall, we had estimated our fiscal year twenty-three surplus funds to be nine point six million in September and requested that the localities dedicate these funds specifically to the pre-K centers in order to close this funding gap. Here you'll see some of the modifications to the ten-year plan, which includes switching the Stonehouse and Matoka HVAC replacements to complete Matoka first. This was a recommendation from the CIP committee, which came from our maintenance staff. Moving the centralized storage at the operations center from fiscal year twenty-eight to fiscal year twenty-seven and increasing the funding request to allow for replacement of the fuel tanks. Repair the observation deck at Hornsby Middle School in fiscal year thirty. LED lighting upgrades have been added in fiscal years thirty to thirty-four, which was a recommendation from the recent facility condition report completed this summer. In addition to these modifications, there are also projects added in fiscal years thirty-two to thirty-four based on the division's established refurbishment and replacement cycles for HVAC refurbishments, flooring, roofs, and generators. The CIP document presents projects by school, and this pie graph shows the breakdown by type of project. HVAC and window projects account for thirty-seven percent of the total five-year CIP or twenty-seven point seven million. Refurbishments, roof replacements, and other repairs account for fourteen point two percent of the total five-year CIP or ten point six million. Other projects, which include things such as refrigerator freezer replacements, generators, and school bus replacements, account for twenty-seven percent or twenty point two million. And new facilities account for twenty-one point nine percent or sixteen point four million of the total five-year CIP. Superintendent's recommended five-year plan total seventy-four point eight million. Some of the major projects included in the five-year plan include additional funds for the construction of pre-K space, centralized storage space at operations, and HVAC replacements at Matthew Whaley, Matoka, Stonehouse, Clarebird Baker, and Jamestown. And that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hall?
On slide eight, I think that's the high school capacity modifications. Yeah, that one, seven. I guess my question is, when looking at the projections that show that Lafayette's population is going to be decreasing and that actually Warhills' population is going to be decreasing, why do we even have an expansion design and construction for Jamestown when we could just redistrict?
This has been moved outside the five-year plan as we continue to watch enrollment over time. There is a possibility, one solution would be redistricting. The additional space at Lafayette has currently been used for our restorative programs, GED, Learning Lab. So if we were to use that for regular high school space, we'd have to find space for those programs as well. So it is going to be fully used initially, but it could eventually become regular student space. So they were, these major additions of classrooms were inside the five years. We've moved them outside. Continuing to monitor, as Mr. Kelly used to say, with the expansion of I sixty-four, anything can happen. So we don't want to move things completely out because we could end up with more students over time.
So you're not counting those classrooms at Lafayette that are being used for students that are zoned to Lafayette, Jamestown, and Warhills that happen to be in those programs? You're not counting that in the capacity?
We actually did add it to the capacity this year of high schools overall, but even that brings the high schools down to ninety-ish percent?
It was around ninety once we added that.
Even if you don't count out, they're at ninety-five percent. And Jamestown is over capacity right now. So one, one solution, of course, is redistricting.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Other questions? Dr. Heron, you, or excuse me, Ms. Ewing, spoke about, if I can find that page again. Thought we had more questions. I had more time. Oh, here we are. Pre-K centers, construction funds, what we had requested, and then there was, I guess, a deficit in what the funding partners had agreed to contribute, and then we're updating that cost estimate. Additional funds needed in the tune of thirteen point two million. I'm just curious, has the updated estimate been communicated with administrators at city and county? And have there, has there been any feedback received yet?
It hasn't been communicated yet. I think we were doing that when we present the information at the joint meeting. I know the increase is mainly to do with land development, Mr., or Dr. Kever, my apologies. If you want to address that for us?
Correct. There needs to be, at least at one of the two sides, the CBB side, a fair amount of land work done in order to help ensure that the building can be built where we feel like it is best situated. I think the other piece is just a slight increase with respect to square footage of the buildings as we've gone through the programming capacity and looked very carefully at what we feel like needs to be included. So those, those two items account for a slight increase.
They're, they're identical buildings, Dr. Kever?
That's our, that's our intent, yes, sir.
And so, well, that just answered my question. I'll leave it at that. Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Ms. Ewing. We'll move on to item six-two, review amendment to our fiscal year twenty-four operating fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. Darm. Ms. Ewing has the next couple of agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. The general, we adopted a budget in September, two thousand and twenty-three that amends the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four direct aid distribution to school divisions. And these amendments include an additional two percent compensation supplement effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and an increase in funded SOQ support positions. And if you recall, our adopted budget included an additional two million in revenue from James City County, which was dependent on future changes in the state budget. And this allowed us to provide for a seven percent salary increase to staff at the beginning of this fiscal year. Based on the state's amended budget, we expect to receive an additional one million, four hundred, twenty-seven thousand in state funding. So this agenda item is to reclassify revenue from local appropriations to state revenue with no change to our overall budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Reclassify from local to state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Ms. Ewing on this item? We'll move on to item six-three, the grants fund budget amendment.
So again, as part of the state budget approved in September, two thousand and twenty-three, one-time state per people funding has been provided to school divisions for the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, learning loss, and additional operating and infrastructure support. Our total allocation amounts to two million, five hundred, sixty-eight thousand, four hundred, forty-seven. And this agenda item is to amend our grants budget to reflect these one-time funds and will bring our total grant budget for this fiscal year to fourteen million, five hundred, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred, fifty-two dollars. We are planning to provide more detailed information regarding the planned use of these funds at the December board meeting.
Yeah, I was going to ask for some information on what all-in details, but we'll get that at a later meeting.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other questions for Ms. Ewing on the grants fund budget amendment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a quick question because I noticed that in the, in that other program that was presented earlier, the, where was it?
What are you looking for, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, what the state came up with for that. Let me, I'll come back to that. I'm not sure what exactly where it was with that. Go on.
All right, we'll move on. Any other questions on, on this item, the grants fund budget? We'll move on to item six-four and reviewing a budget transfer request.
I'm sorry, I didn't remember what it was.
Okay, hit it.
Highly skilled tutors, where are those coming from?
The all-in grant funds that Ms. Ewing has just talked about been added to the budget.
Right. But, because I noticed that. The chronic absentee, that, that presentation and that, that organization.
Restorative.
Yeah. That also made reference to highly skilled tutors being used. I'm just, you can come back to that. You wanted to answer that today, but I'm just.
Sounds like we'll have a, a presentation on that in an upcoming meeting.
And the all-in fund, seventy percent are towards the high-intensity tutoring, twenty percent are towards literacy and the development of literacy, and ten percent are actually allocated to chronic absenteeism and strategies to support that.
Okay, this budget transfer request. Dr. Heron?
Ms. Ewing again.
Ms. Ewing?
At the September fifth board meeting, contracts were approved for various vendors to provide special education services to the school division, and a budget transfer up to five hundred thousand was also approved. Currently, we are utilizing contracts to cover eleven positions, which include speech-language therapists, occupational therapists, special education teachers and aides. And due to continued staffing vacancies in this area, additional funds are needed to support the various contracts. We are requesting approval of a budget transfer from salaries and benefits to contracted services in the amount of seven hundred, fifty thousand. And that is projected to hopefully last through the year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And these transfers will be pulled from?
Salaries and benefits.
Salaries and benefits.
To contracted services.
Salaries and benefits from teacher pool.
Unfilled positions.
Unfilled.
Yeah, unfilled positions.
All right.
Just a quick question, and I'm sure I'm just not matching up the right thing, but the, the chart that we're seeing with all the different companies' names, total seven hundred, seventy-seven thousand plus?
Right, so at the time I prepared the agenda item, that's where we were. Since then, we've added two additional special education teachers, so we're up to nine hundred, thirty-three thousand. And so I've added a small cushion to hopefully last through the rest of the year so I don't have to come back again for a budget transfer request.
All right. Other questions for Ms. Ewing? Okay. Item six-five, review amendment to the local plan for gifted education and talent development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Dr. Colorado is here to present amendments, propose amendments to the five-year local plan for the gifted, for gifted education and talent development. Welcome, Dr. Colorado.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I'm Ann Colorado, the proud coordinator for gifted education and talent development for WJCC public schools. I'm here tonight to share with you a summary of the work we have been doing in our gifted education and talent development program and a brief update to our local plan for the education of the gifted that came out of our work last year. Since our new local plan for the education of the gifted was approved in June of two thousand and twenty-one, we have taken a three-pronged approach to implementing gifted education and talent development with fidelity across our sixteen schools. We have also explicitly connected our work in gifted education and talent development to the six goals of our WJCC strategic plan. The first prong is about our systems for screening and identification. We audited all our systems and instrumentation for equity and best practices, which led to our creation of more robust screening and gifted identification protocols and tools. The second prong hinges on targeted annual professional development for both teachers and administrators and scheduled monthly or quarterly collaboration between our gifted teachers and classroom teachers to utilize rich differentiated resources with all students as well as advanced students. The third prong focuses on enhanced family communication through revamping the information on our website, giving different types of presentations through family academy or department webinars, and involving families in gifted ad hoc committees when we need parent feedback on program ideas. We feel that our three-pronged approach ensures that all students' need for academic challenge and potential to succeed in rigorous coursework and programs will be addressed K through twelve. Out of all the work our program has accomplished during the past two school years, I wanted to highlight two initiatives in more detail. The advanced math pathways, grades five through eight gifted ad hoc committee work we completed this past spring, and the full implementation pilot of the talent development push-in program, K through two, at James River Elementary School. Tonight, I will focus on the advanced math pathways work since it requires a school board vote to implement. At a meeting in the near future, I will share with you the successive successes we've seen with our full pilot of talent development at James River. The Office of Gifted Education and Talent Development and Elementary and Secondary Mathematics Departments requested to form a gifted ad hoc committee to explore a proposal for a revised WJCC advanced math pathway. The new pathway would move Math Six out of fifth grade, and in its place, we will offer an enriched Math Five course designed specifically for gifted math students. To implement this change will require an approved amendment to the local plan for the education of the gifted by the school board. You can see the timeline of our work on this slide, completed by our eighteen stakeholders who served on the gifted ad hoc committee. The committee provided overwhelmingly positive support for this proposal, including Dr. Beers, who represented the school board on this committee. We shared with the gifted ad hoc committee that since Math Five standards, content, and processes are foundational to all higher-level math courses, we believe that elementary students should not skip a year of math content except in very rare circumstances. Instead, we propose that gifted math students complete a differentiated Math Five course in elementary school to prepare them to successfully complete the compacted content in the new Math Six, Seven course as sixth graders. With the school board's approval at the next meeting, this revision would go into effect for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This recommendation has many advantages. It still retains a gifted math class in fifth grade, which will still be taught by the gifted teacher. It still retains a pathway to Algebra One and Geometry in middle school. It follows a best practice for acceleration, which works first through differentiation, then through compacting, then through course skipping if needed, which closes math content and process gaps. And it offers more on-ramps to the accelerated math pathway for more students. With your approval of this amendment to the local plan, we stand ready to complete the work necessary to begin teaching the new Math Five enriched course for gifted math students in twenty-four, twenty-five. Mr. Chair and school board members, I hope our passion for our work and the benefits of our gifted education and talent development program for all WJCC gifted students as well as all K through twelve students and teachers is evident. I welcome any questions you may have for me.
Thank you, Ms. Colorado. Yeah, Ms. Orga?
Just out of curiosity, what, what prompted this change? Where were we? I know that the fifth grade gifted essentially just did sixth grade. They just did it a year ahead. So what, what patterns were you seeing or what prompted the need to change this?
Well, we really started looking at the math standards and what they were asking our students to do and the amount of time that it really takes students to grasp the concepts and have facility with them in order to continue down the accelerated math pathway. And so we looked at cohorts of SOL scores from our gifted students and the types of classes they were taking in high school. And we studied research in the field in math and just, just the type of, like National Council of Teachers of Mathematics and the recommendations with standards. So a lot, we also looked at our neighboring school divisions and what they're doing. And a lot of them are not starting the acceleration until middle school. And so a lot of our neighboring divisions have a pre-algebra grade six, seven, eight class put together for sixth graders. And so we really spent over a year researching all of that and then sharing that information with the ad hoc committee. And now we have new SOLs coming that are even a little more conceptually based and just really expecting kids to do more.
And in order to set up our students for the best math future, we really believe that we need to move the acceleration into middle school and do a more in-depth Math Five for our gifted students.
Okay, so does that mean we were seeing amongst the gifted students in middle school the SOL scores not, not doing as well?
All of our students were still passing, definitely, yes.
Was it a decline, though, in general of, I mean, there must have been a gap in, in the grasping of some concepts?
Well, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the grasping of concepts, but the SOL scores weren't as, did, did look like they were going down a little bit, but not necessarily down compared to students who are not in the accelerated pathway, just a little less than what we would like to see. And, you know, we do have things that we put in place to help students get any gaps that they might be having to catch up on any gaps. But still, it just doesn't seem like best practice is moving acceleration into middle school.
Ms. Colorado, can you help me understand what, I guess, what a prerequisite to taking an accelerated pathway would look like?
Do you mean for the Math Six, Seven course? Or just in general, what we? Oh, for what we've been doing. We've been identifying students in, at the end of fourth grade, they would take, we'd look at all of their test scores. We would do additional testing with them and qualify them as gifted students in math. And that was the prerequisite for doing Math Six in fifth grade.
And my understanding continuing forward and perhaps in this proposed pathway plan, is that the same standard and prerequisite? And does it continue, does that standard follow the student as they look to take either pre-algebra eight or Algebra One as a seventh grader?
Yes, that we're gonna still identify students for gifted math course for fifth grade. And going forward, their data for each year will help determine if that's still, if staying on that accelerated pathway is best.
What if they're not identified in fifth grade, but they catch on? It becomes a strength in seventh or eighth grade, what does that look like?
Yes, the Math Six, Seven course is open enrollment, so students could try the accelerated course in sixth grade. At the end of sixth grade, all of their data is also reviewed by the math department and their math teachers and school counselors. And there are opportunities for students to be placed into an accelerated course based on how they did that school year.
Great, great, thank you, Ms. Colorado.
You're welcome.
No thoughts or questions for Ms. Colorado? I do appreciate you, you being here and presenting this, and I think there's more to come, it sounds like so. We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
See you then.
All right, move on to item six six, a review of program studies for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're going to do the annual presentation of the program of studies. And Ms. Walter and Ms. Monpoint are here to present. Coming into the room right now, I believe, are all of the secondary coordinators who support and are part of developing the program of studies for each year. Ms. Monpoint, you want to introduce your staff?
I sure will. We have Ms. Rebecca Cawthorn. And you just heard from Ms. Ann. We also have Sarah Brandt, John Raski, and Adam Ottstock. I'm sorry, and Leanne Chisenhall is also here. Dr. Colorado.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. It is our pleasure to present to you tonight the program of studies for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Tonight's proposed revisions and updates reflect the continuing goal of making WJCC's program of studies a user-friendly and relevant resource for students and families as they consider which courses, programs, and options offer the best path toward achieving their goals. As you can see here, the program of studies aligns with WJCC's strategic plan to elevate beyond excellence and specifically supports Goals One, Two, and Three. Before we begin, we would like to thank the many different groups and stakeholders who met, reviewed information, and provided input over the last few months to develop the program of studies proposed this evening, including the secondary content coordinators who are able to join us tonight. As an additional note, any new courses added to the program of studies went through the new course proposal process, which includes an interdisciplinary, excuse me, interdisciplinary committee review and considers impacts on staffing, facilities, and other courses within the content area. In tonight's presentation, it is important to note that the updated New Horizons CTE and Governor's School program information will be updated within our program of studies once we received an approved copy from their board. I will move through the changes and updates being proposed for the program of studies this evening, and you will find these in summary form within the summary of changes chart provided to you. This chart identifies all proposed changes for the program of studies this year and includes the page where you will find each of these changes. If a page is not included within this chart, then no change is being proposed for that page within the program of studies for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. To begin, I'd like to start on page three within the using the program of studies section. Here you will see an update to replace Virginia Wizard with School Links as the resource for college and career planning for students. With implementing School Links across the division for students in grades six through twelve, we wanted the program of studies to align with the implementation of this resource within our schools. Within the general information and terminology section on page five, we have one update to share. The description of sequential electives has been updated to align with updates to the requirements from the Virginia Department of Education. The change includes removing world languages as an option within courses that can be used to partially satisfy sequential electives for the graduation requirement. Within the middle school program on page seven, we have updated the description of the gifted education program to align with our current structures, where we no longer cluster students solely in English and social studies courses based on their differentiated needs as gifted students. We have deeper dive instructional materials from multiple content areas to support students' needs for extended learning opportunities. Within the high school program section of the program of studies, beginning on page nine, there were a few minor changes and updates made this year. First, within diploma seals, the State Board of Education seal description was updated to match the definition provided by the Virginia Department of Education. Additionally, the State Board of Education's Advanced Mathematics and Technology Seal was removed from the diploma seal list as the seal was only available to those who entered high school prior to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Also, within this section, the link to the AP transfer policy for Virginia Peninsula Community College was updated to vpcc.edu as this would be the best link to follow to access this resource as websites and addresses change throughout the school year. This concludes the overall updates and revisions for the proposed program of studies. Ms. Monpoint will now move on to share specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at the secondary level.
Good evening. Before I present updates for middle and high school, I want to bring to your attention four courses. Two in middle and two in high, where very minor grammatical changes were made in the program of studies. Minor grammatical changes were made in two middle school math courses, Prealgebra Six and Prealgebra Seven. In addition, minor grammatical changes were made in two high school English courses, Commonwealth Innovation for English Ten and Principles of Business and Marketing, and Honors English Eleven. This year, WJCC is pleased to propose two, I'm sorry, a new course offering for middle school students in the area of fine arts. Additionally, within middle school programming, there are minor changes in course descriptions. In this next section, I will outline all of these for you. In middle school math, we've updated the sequence chart on page twenty-six to reflect the changes in our math sequencing that began this school year with the implementation of Prealgebra Six, Seven. Here you will see the changes in courses beginning at the fifth grade level and following the opportunities through eighth grade. Within Health and Physical Education, you will note changes to the course descriptions for Health and Physical Education, grade six. These changes were made to align with the current structure of the grade seven and grade eight course descriptions, in addition to removing language related to the course being helped, being taught by Health and Physical Education teachers to remain consistent in our language for all course descriptions. This year, we are pleased to put forward the addition of an Advanced Band course for students in grades seven and eight. You will find this new course on page thirty-five. This course will provide experienced students with a higher-level ensemble experience in their band elective. In partnership with their band director, students will implement an individualized band contract that will create their goals for the duration of the course. Students will prepare advanced-level materials for concerts, audition for all district events, and complete theory and VBODA band activities. We feel this new offering will help advanced-level band students continue to strengthen their skills as they prepare for their high school experiences. We would like to begin the high school course updates on page thirty-eight of the program of studies. As a reminder, you may follow along with these changes on the summary of changes chart provided to you as a quick reference guide. Tonight, I will review updates and edits made to high school courses within math, science, social studies, fine arts, health and PE, and CTE departments. In the mathematics section, beginning on page forty-five, we have updated the math sequence graphic to provide a clearer description of sequences. Within the Algebra, Functions, and Data Analysis course description, we've added language to the course description on the benefits of the infusion of technology within the course. We are excited to offer Data Science as a new math course next year. Data Science requires the prerequisite of geometry and will provide students with the opportunity to engage in Data Science problem-solving structure to formulate questions through data investigations based on their interests. This new math offering is being offered as a pilot course from the Department of, from Virginia Department of Education in some divisions this school year and counts as a math credit towards a student's standard or advanced diploma. An additional change in the area of math is within the Grade Twelve, Grade Twelve Math Capstone course. Prerequisite for this course has been updated to indicate that students must have one verified credit in math as opposed to the two previously required. This change comes from the VDOE and aligns with updated graduation requirements that no longer require two math verified credits. Beginning, beginning on page fifty-one, in the science department, we have updated the course pathway chart to provide the variety of opportunities in a more user-friendly format. We have changed the grade level requirements for Earth Science and Honors Earth Science to grades ten through twelve to reflect the priority of ninth graders enrolling in either environmental science or biology courses for their freshman year. Additionally, through, throughout the science section of the program of studies, you will see updates to prerequisites to now include environmental science as an additional option in every instance where Earth Science is also a prerequisite. This is due to an update from the VDOE and can be found in Earth Science Two, Oceanography, Biology Two, Advanced Survey Topics, Field Biology, and AP Environmental Science courses. Within the Social Studies section on page sixty-one, we have added a new elective option, AP African-American Studies. This is an interdisciplinary course that examines the diversity of African-American experiences, where students will explore key topics that extend from early African kingdoms to today. Within Fine Arts on page seventy-seven, we are introducing a new course tonight, Advanced Technical Theater. With a prerequisite of technical theater, this course will, will build on that content with an emphasis on design and leadership. Students will be given opportunities to create designs in student-selected specialized areas, including scenery, sound, lighting, makeup, costume, and props. Beginning on page seventy-eight, we are putting forward a change to current Health and Physical Education course structures at the high school level. With this change, we will be transitioning from Health and Physical Education One and Two to Health and Physical Education Nine and Health and Physical Education Ten. Health and Physical Education One and Nine are the same courses, but with a name change to indicate the common grade level that students take the course. Health and Physical Education Two is transitioning to Health and Physical Education Ten, which will now include driver education with the health component, within the health component of this course. With this change also comes the update to the standalone driver education course currently offered to indicate that two thousand, that the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year will be the last year WJCC will offer this course as a standalone. Offering the course for one more year allows any students who have already taken Health and Physical Education Two to still take driver education if they would like. Within Career and Technical Education on page eighty-two, we have adjusted the grade level requirements for Economics and Personal Finance to grades ten through twelve to allow more opportunities for students and flexibility within their schedules and course planning. This concludes our updates to course offerings and descriptions for middle and high school. As a reminder, the New Horizons Career and Technical Education Program of Studies for twenty-four, twenty-five and the Governor's School Program model will be updated and included upon the arrival, I'm sorry, upon the approval of their board. An additional update that will be included upon determinations made at the January school board meeting will be in the updated school board member section.
I would now like to share the course request timeline for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We are continuing to adjust our timeline in our work towards identifying and solidifying student requests earlier in the year. Beginning in January, when we return from winter break, school counselors will begin classroom and individual planning sessions with all of our rising sixth through twelfth grade students. This year's curriculum fairs will be held on January tenth for rising sixth through eighth grade students and January eleventh for rising ninth through twelfth grade students. Also in January, school counselors will be facilitating transition planning by providing lessons for all of their feeder schools. Our course request window for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year will open online for all rising sixth through twelfth grade students and their families on January sixteenth and close on February seventh. This concludes our presentation on the program of studies for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. We welcome any questions you may have at this time.
All right, I'm looking for eyes, I think Ms. Hummel, then Ms. Hundley. Ms. Hummel?
Could we look at page thirty in the redline version? Under, it's Health and Phys Ed, grade six, seven, one, one, one. So, let me know when you're there.
Sorry. Yes, Health and Phys Ed, grade six.
Right.
Okay.
So what immediately kind of, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing sex education red, struck out.
Yes, ma'am, but family life is remaining.
Okay, but why is that struck out when it was there before? I, I mean, because the question that I ask.
I will lean towards Mr. Ottstock as I, as I want to make sure.
Thank you for your question. In grades seven and eight, they refer to family life education. And so we're just making it consistent from six, seven, and eight. The curriculum has not changed, the curriculum is still family life, it does include sex education. We're just making it common vernacular across six, seven, and eight in the program of studies.
And then the removal of the, the last sentence there.
I'm sorry.
Is there no longer a handbook on family life and sex education?
There is, but we felt like that wasn't the appropriate place to put that information. We have all of that information currently on our website for family life. The very last sentence, this course is taught by Health and Physical Education teachers, we felt like was redundant since it's a Health and Physical Education course.
I'm only saying this because my mother was Miss Sex Ed in the nineteen seventies of WJCC system.
I'm sure that's all she wants to be remembered.
It, it was what I, everyone told me, your mom is the sex ed lady. And so, anyway, I just want to say, I'm like, yay for sex ed. And I want to make sure that it is taught appropriately, but still a very important part of our curriculum.
I one hundred percent agree, and I will add one more thing, the VDOE family life standards does not say family life and sex ed standards, it says family life standards. So that vernacular is also in line with what the VDOE calls that curriculum as well.
So nothing lost, I guess.
Nothing is, no.
Just a change in the title.
Absolutely, yes, the curriculum is still there, it is still very accessible by anybody who would like to see it.
My mother in heaven.
Yes.
Would be very happy. Now to a less, just, so on page forty-five, you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Page forty-five, I've got the chart about data science, and I just can't find it.
So we're looking at math?
Math.
You can't, I'm sorry, you can't find the math chart, or you can't find the data science description?
Your new chart.
Forty-six.
On page, no, well, for me, it says forty-five. It's the course. On page, no, well, for me, it says forty-five, it's the course sequences. I'm looking at the course sequences. Yeah, these like right here?
Yes ma'am, the one you're looking at right now is the redline version, so that's what's deleted out, that's the old version.
Deleted out.
That one right there, yep, that's the new one.
This is the new one, and then I'm seeing.
Data science is on the left, second, third row down.
Thank you, I just was like looking at it going, where is the data science on here? Because, so redline, you just put one redline across.
Fortunately, Office three sixty-five would only allow me to do one line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, Ms. Hundley?
Uh, yes, so just for my clarity, and maybe anyone that's listening, when we add new course, courses, do other courses go away, or they're still there, it's just once the kids start looking at what they want, then something may not make, and then the other ones do. I, I'm just still unclear.
Sure.
On that.
Um, so, we, tonight we are not proposing removing anything from the program of studies, only adding, um, so the other options are still available to students, the only one change to that would be that standalone driver's ed course where we are pointing out, uh, to the community that next year will be the last year it's offered, so students are aware they have that opportunity to take the course. Um, when it comes to course registration, students will make their selections based on their interests, and based on the amount of students that request certain classes, that is when we are able to determine what we can offer and cannot offer.
Okay, and also, do any of those courses have to have new staff, or these are current staff we already have that should be able to, like, they won't need additional training for any of these new?
All new courses proposed tonight can be teach by, excuse me, can be taught. Headed your way, Ms. Brant, for English, um, can be taught by all of our current staff.
And will there be additional training, or any of these courses, will they need, um, like, forty to sixty hours additional training for any of them?
It is my understanding, but I'll do a quick head count that no additional training.
Uh, Advanced placement African American Studies, uh, we have requested in our, our budget proposal that those teachers be given the opportunity to attend AEP Institute for that course, which is a week-long institute.
Okay.
To provide those teachers with that support materials and course sequencing and, and those types of things, to prepare them to teach that course at the eighth grade level.
Okay, also one last question, so the teach for tomorrow course was near and dear to my heart, but, um, we would have a teacher already on board since it hasn't made her for a while, we would have someone that, that could be ready to roll into that if we needed it.
Yes, we do have teachers in our building trained to do that, and we do have a section at Lafayette this year.
Thank you.
Ms. Donner?
I have one comment which I am really, actually two comments, really excited to see that we have African American AP history, I think that's a fantastic add to our program of study and really supports learning for all students in our division. I'm also super excited to see data science as someone who works in a bank where we are desperate for data scientists, it is so important that we are giving kids access to this program of study this early because that is, if you're looking at a place where there's growth and where we need, you know, a lot of our data scientists, we actually sponsor visas because we don't have enough American students to be able to do that. So to be able to have students that are here and in Virginia, there's lots of wonderful companies that would be happy to hire, so really excited about that. Um, and then lastly, so a question about drivers that I know at the end of last year there were questions about not enough drivers at teachers, particularly at certain schools, by embedding it into the curriculum, does that solve for that problem of not having all the kids being able to have access to drivers ed, or how do those two things work?
When it's embedded into the health portion of Health and PE ten, every student, since Health and PE ten is a gradu, is one of our graduation requirements, every student will, uh, have access to that content and be able to take that course.
Thank you.
Ms. Don, Ms. Ortega?
But, for one year? Then it's going away, right, is that it?
Uh.
Driver's ed?
Hold up, the standalone driver's ed course will be going away after next year because next year we will start embedding it as the, in.
I see.
Um, part of the health instruction in Health and PE ten.
Okay.
So we wanted one more year to make sure any student who had already taken Health and PE two could still take driver's ed, um, since they would have already taken the health course that it's now going to be embedded in.
Okay, so it's not going away?
No ma'am.
It's just going to be available at all the, all three high schools now instead of?
Yes, it will now be a part of Health and PE ten, and every student has to take that as a graduation requirement.
Oh, okay, all right.
Come back to Ms. Hummel.
It's a follow-up to Ms. Ortega, so I had to pay money for my kids to go through driver's ed.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Okay, and so does this mean I wouldn't need to pay, is, does it also incorporate the behind the wheels, or no?
Good evening. This, this would not incorporate the behind the wheel, this is just the classroom portion of driver education, it is a, the curriculum is, uh, created by the state, it's, um, uniform across all schools, across all divisions, everybody uses the same, um, curriculum, it, it is a curriculum that is developed to last for nine weeks of instruction, and so originally when we had a hybrid schedule and we had some semester courses and some year-long courses, we used driver ed as an elective at, on a semester basis, because it was most appropriately put, um, for that period of instructional time. Now we have all year-long AB courses, and so we're teaching a, a course that is essentially developed for nine weeks over an entire year, which is just not incredibly appropriate for a, a few different reasons. Um, most school divisions in the state of Virginia offer driver ed in Health and PE ten, we're one of, a very, very small minority that offers it as an elective course, and so we're really, um, offering it not only as more age-appropriate, we're offering it, um, as it's intended to be developed in terms of the instructional time, um, and, we're also increasing driver literacy in our community because now every student will take driver education classroom, um, in our schools.
And so.
Drive, uh, behind the wheel will still be an option for all students.
Oh, it will be, okay.
They can, they, they are more than welcome to sign up and pay for it within the school division, or if they want to take behind the wheel with a private company, they're more than welcome to do that as well.
And that like is an after-school thing, or a, or is it part of the?
Our behind the wheel drivers' schedule with students at various times, after school, before school, weekends, over the summer, yeah.
Okay, so this would actually save our community or our parents a little bit of money because they would, they could, they'd have the, all the education out of the way, and then all they'd need to do is deal with the behind the wheel that they could do.
Students and families that took classroom and behind the wheel with the private company, you are correct, they would not need to take the classroom piece.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask a follow-on to that? Too far?
Yes.
I, I'm just curious, uh, did we find that there were, uh, a large number of students that were electing to take driver's ed?
Um, there are a fair number that take driver ed, but not everybody takes driver ed, and we can't, as a school division, we can't guarantee that they're going to take it from a private company, um, there is obviously a cost associated with that, and so, um, we do find that there are some unlicensed drivers in our community, and, um, you know, obviously, by only providing the classroom piece, we can't guarantee that they're going to be licensed, but we can guarantee that they'll be educated on, um, the, the basic components of driver education if they do so, uh, elect to drive unlicensed, which hopefully they don't do, but.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, Ms. Ross.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, I did have another question, am I barging in on anybody else? Okay, um, what was my question? Oh, uh, we hear from, I don't think I'm the only board member that's heard from students at the high school level asking that, uh, we provide Latin, uh, as a course, um, some students, in particular this year, have, um, reached out suggesting that it wasn't available to them, that going from one, um, year to the next, uh, they were just kind of left in a lurch, uh, having begun Latin but not able to continue, is that something that, um, the committee had heard and had discussed?
I think Dr. Worley will be able to respond to the, the request for Latin.
Hi, good evening, everyone, um, we obviously want to offer each, every language that we can to all students, but as always, it's based upon not only student, um, requests, but also availability of staff, and so we really, um, dealt with some situations with staffing that we had to get creative this year, and, um, we, we're doing the best we can, and we facilitated some online, so as long as there's a teacher here to provide the coursework, we absolutely have an in-person opportunity, um, some may be continued through the online options that we have through Virtual Virginia if we don't have a person to staff the class.
All right, uh, last call for questions or comments regarding primary stu, program of studies. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for joining us this evening, and as we, uh, laid it through some other topics, I appreciate you being here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, um, last proposed agenda item for the evening, item six, seven, a, uh, RFP for bulk fuel services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Snipes is going to present this item this evening.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Herring, tonight's proposed agenda items, supports goal six of the strategic plan, is being brought for, for your consideration, is RFP number two zero two four zero one five four, which is bulk fuel delivery services. The purpose of the RFP, uh, is to solicit several proposals to establish a bulk fuel delivery service contract for James City County and Williamsburg James City County Public Schools. We will award it to a licensed certified provider, um, as described in the contract, it will be for a one year with a, with four additional years renewal options, um, per the terms and conditions of the James City County and Williamsburg James City County Public Schools. The RFP is intended to be broad and inclusive of all mo, motor fuels used by JCC and Williamsburg James City County. A request for proposal was issued on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three with the due date of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. This is a placeholder agenda item because at the time the item was prepared, the entire process has not been completed or presented to the funding partners. The superintendent recommends that the school board review the information and be prepared to vote at the November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting.
Is this a collaborative RB, RFP with James City County?
It is a collaborative, but they've separated out, so we will have, they will be invoicing us and the county separately, but it was a joint effort to get the fuel services cost down.
Gotcha, okay. I'm looking at you, Ms. Hummel, did you have a thought there?
I have thoughts, but not.
Okay, all right.
I always have thoughts.
Believe it alone. Any, uh, questions or comments for Mr. Snipes on this RFP? You answered my one, thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it. How we doing? Yeah, okay. We'll take a short, we'll call it five-minute recess, I was gonna say three, a five-minute recess, before we move on to, uh, item seven, policies, we'll be back, thank you. To agenda item seven, policies, and we do have fifteen to review. At the outset, I'd just always like to show my appreciation to the policy committee for their arduous work getting us through this process, to this point in our our meetings. And as well as the policy committee, Dr. Heron, senior leadership team and staff as well, doing the heavy lifting so that we can review these without too much effort. So with that, I wanted to turn it over to you, Dr. Heron, item seven one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will pass straight to Dr. Kiefer.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, members of the board. In going through the policies this evening, the first one, and Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll just start with seven zero one and and take us through. And if people have questions, I'll be glad to answer them as we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Terrific. The first policy we're bringing forward this evening is policy CBA, qualifications and duties for the superintendent. This policy was last revised in February of twenty eighteen. We have made some shifts in language to more closely and better align with V S B A. And additionally, there's a, there was a code revision that we added the language from the V S B A model policy in lines sixty five through eighty in order to meet that requirement. Legal and cross references were updated as well. Our attorney has reviewed and approved our changes.
And as we go through these, bulk of these, we are just gonna take a pause and let the board interject with questions or concerns before we proceed. Not hearing any, we'll proceed.
Policy CBB is a new policy that we're bringing forward detailing the appointment and term of the superintendent. It's not currently a policy that we have in our policy manual, nor is it something that is captured in the school board standard operating procedures. The policy that we're bringing forward you this evening in terms of the the new language directly aligns with the V S B A model policy as well as Virginia code. Again, the attorney has reviewed and approved our suggested inclusion of this in our policy manual.
And is it fair to say that this policy, that the intent behind this policy is what we followed up to this point?
I would absolutely agree that it is.
Thank you.
Policy CBD, general. General, it's under general school administration, I'm sorry. The title of it is superintendent's contract compensation and benefits. Very minimal changes to this particular policy, a couple formatting pieces, no content, specific changes. We did update the cross references. And then finally, CBG, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. Some redundant language was removed. There was a code provision that required superintendents to also have an evaluative component related to cultural competency. We've made that revision within the policy itself and included that as one of the bulleted items in terms of the evaluation process, updated the legal references.
Is the superintendent the only one that's required to be evaluated on that?
Their principals as well as teachers. So all of those items were changed in evaluation components.
Thank you, sir.
If I, if it's okay with the board, I'll move on to seven zero five and start talking about some of the personnel related policies.
Thank you.
In this particular instance, we're bringing forward a series of personnel policies that we are suggesting be retired and more appropriately categorized as regulations within a specific policy. So let me, let me be even more clear. We are recommending the retirement of policy G C A A slash G D A, administrators and educational support employee salary schedules. We're recommending the retirement of G D B, reclassification of educational support personnel, as well as G D B A, regrade of educational support personnel. In a couple of these cases, some of these policies were adopted in the early nineties and have not been revised since then. G C A A and G D A were last revised in twenty eleven. There are not, in the case of these three, corresponding V S B A policies that go with it. Through our review, we felt like it was appropriate to take these three policies, create regulations within the G C B A staff salaries schedules policy. And so what you'll see there is the the inclusion or the reference to the superintendent is authorized to promulgate any necessary regulations to implement the policy. There would be three regulations that are revised to correspond with those that were retiring.
Three regulations being revised and they're contained within G C B A.
That is correct.
G C A A, yeah. Is that what you said?
G C B A.
They would become regulations in G C B A. There'd be three regulations there.
And so just so we're on the same page, Dr. Kiefer just covered for us seven, five through seven, excuse me, policy items seven, five through seven, seven as retirements and seven, eight being bolstered to accommodate what's being retired there. Any questions or comments on that proposal? Mr. K, Dr. Kiefer, excuse me.
Thank you. Let's see, policy I C A, which is seven zero nine, which is a school calendar policy. It's just, I think, important to note that the last time this policy was revised by the board was two thousand and one, not the Space Odyssey, but the year. This particular policy on the V S B A side is actually a combined policy with school year. As a school division, we actually have two separate policies. We have school year and then school calendar. We felt like it makes the most sense to keep those items separated, but to revise our language around the school calendar, the process, the adoption as well. So we made a couple of revisions there. The V S B A terms, the committee is an advisory committee. There was also the removal of some redundant language in lines twelve through thirteen. And ultimately, the idea that the the teacher, school administration and families help us with the advisory part was included as well. What questions can I answer?
Ms. Donner, you have your hand? Okay, I'm sorry. The only question I had on this was, excuse me, the only question I had on this was while teachers, school administration and families are identified, professional staff, community is stricken, are we confident we're not losing a touch point there?
From our perspective, we're not changing our process by which we go through the the calendar development, review, feedback from community, feedback from parents. We feel like all of those bases are covered.
Move on, I think. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We are recommending in agenda item seven, ten, we're recommending the retirement of policy I H B H, which is the charter school policy. We are recommending the retirement of that because frankly, we feel like it needs to be reconfigured as policy L C, which is a charter school policy as well. So we talked a little bit about dear red line, olive one, and then green line, a brand new one. We felt like the the cleanest way to do is say, let's retire the one in the I section and bring back charter schools in L C where we think it makes more sense in terms of the policy manual and how it sits there relative to educational agencies. What you'll see if you review L C is you'll see a very close, almost exact replica of the V S B A model policy when it comes to charter schools. We feel like it sits better in L C and the language there is is almost an exact replica of V S B A.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer.
Next item for us to discuss is seven, twelve, review revisions to policy I G A I. This is the entitled Character Education. We have made some shifts and revisioned the language and consistent use of the term programming and instruction. We we feel like it is not necessarily a standalone program, but it is more inclusive than that whereby adding the term instruction. The revisions also were made to align the V S with the V S B A model policy. So in those places where you see the term, the program, we've changed that to character education programming. We've also added specific content from V S B A around parents' rights to review any bullying, audiovisual material that may contain sexual or violent content.
Apologize, I'm only really seeing this now, having read this before. But in that portion of this policy, where parents have the right to review any audiovisual materials that contain graphic, sexual or violent content, and then it's qualified by that statement used in any anti-bullying program. Are we limiting ourselves by that addition, additional language?
I don't think we're limiting ourselves by that because I believe with with our other policy I I A, we do meet a threshold in terms of pre-notification.
Okay, I I A.
And that's also included, I believe, as a cross reference.
Is it also because anti-bullying would specifically fall under character education versus other aspects of?
I believe so. I'll defer to Ms. Ford.
Okay. Okay. And I'll take a look at I I A. Thank you. Seven thirteen?
Yes, sir. Turning our attention to seven thirteen, and as we approach these next three policy revisions, I'd like to share some opening comments with the board with respect to agenda item seven thirteen, seven fourteen and seven fifteen. These are policy revisions for Williamsburg, James City County schools to have us be in compliance with the twenty twenty three model policies on privacy, dignity and respect for all students and parents as released by the Virginia Department of Education during the summer. Using a very similar model to the one that we applied in twenty twenty one with the video release of model policies, there has been significant staff work with legal counsel to include a briefing with the school board, central office administrators and through the policy committee review process. Just by way of reminder, in twenty twenty one, we approached the model policy implementation by looking at all of the possible current policies that may need revision or updating in order to be in compliance with the release from the state. We approached the work in the exact same fashion with the twenty twenty three model policy release. At the core of this was are the four guiding principles shared by the Virginia Department of Education in their model policy guidance. One, that schools shall respect all students. Two, that parents have the right to make decisions with respect to their children. Three, schools shall serve the needs of all students. And four, schools shall partner with parents. Prior to detailing the three suggested policy revisions, I do want to share items that are not in accordance with model policy language and or our current policies changing. So we're not changing certain items because we believe that we are currently in line, and I want to make sure I mention those so there are no questions. Policy A C, non-discrimination. Policy G B A, prohibition against discrimination and harassment. And policy J B, educational opportunities and non-discrimination harassment. These policies were all updated in twenty twenty one and do not need revisions relative to the twenty twenty three model policy release. Policy I G D, extracurricular activities, does not need to be revised as it currently complies with the twenty twenty three model policies. Policy I G D G, which is interscholastic athletics, our current policy for W J C C indicates that we follow the rules and regulations of the Virginia High School League. Currently, the high school league has not changed their rules in terms of eligibility and competition. However, there has been a request at the state level to consider revisions to Virginia High School League rules. We will, as a school division, continue to monitor this process and keep the board updated should there need, should there be a need for us to consider a shift in our local policy. Policy J F C A, student dress code does not need to be revised as the current W J C C policy aligns with model policies. And then policy G C L, professional staff development, does not need revision as the requirement for staff mental health training is already included in the current policy and is aligned with the twenty twenty three model policies. So with that said, let me talk about the three policies that we do believe need revision. And I'll start with policy J O. Policy revision J O, we are adding specific language in lines eleven through fourteen. And that specific language indicates that with written permission by the parent or eligible student, and we want to be sure that we're defining eligible student as eighteen years or older, school staff shall refer to a student using the requested preferred name on the record. That would be the the student's record. No student record identifying information is to be changed without the eligible student or parent permission. So that is the change to policy J O that we're bringing forward on behalf of the committee that will put us in compliance with the model policies.
Ms. Young?
We had a very lengthy discussion. You can imagine these discussions were long. The only thing I still, I did address the issue of teachers who did not feel like they could use an alternative name, and I was assured by, and I wouldn't make that public, that that then that there would be discussions with the principal and ways to accommodate that teacher because there are teachers that are going to have difficulty with this, so.
As I read, and I appreciate that, Ms. Young, as I read this, policy addition, school staff shall refer to a student using the requested preferred name on the record. That statement on the record suggests that there is a formal process, right? It's not simply a student asking that their name be considered something else. A parent or guardian went through a process.
That's correct.
And the administration at the school adhere to that.
That is correct.
Okay. Can you talk about, if you if you would, once a parent or guardian goes through that process at the school level with administration, how quickly or more readily available, how readily available is that name change, official name change in their record, is that made to the teacher?
I would say within twenty four to forty eight hours. It would be particularly quick.
Are there any tools, particular tools that are available to the teacher that they see that without having to march down to the?
Sure, why don't I let Ms. Boujwa respond to that?
Yes, we have the ability within our student information system to be able to document what the preferred name would be. It would still maintain the legal name, but it will also identify the preferred name.
Is there a distinction between the legal name and the preferred name?
They are different fields within the system so that we can maintain both.
Ms. Donner?
So if I'm understanding it, this policy as written would require if a student wanted to be called by a different name, that this would require that the the parent have permission, so. Like if I was a football player and I wanted to go by like Shover, I don't know. Like you couldn't, if that was my football name, right, like I go around school, everybody knows me as Bruiser. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm doing stereotypes on football players, but forgive me. Everyone calls me Bruiser. The teacher couldn't call me Bruiser because that's not a prefer, like, that's not a, that is not on my official record and the teacher hasn't written that down.
Can you speak from an administrative perspective?
I can, and I do think that the nickname provision piece could become complicated. This is really about specific name change scenarios and and or use of the pronoun piece. So i- if if that is a, if you have been Bruiser since first grade and everybody calls you Bruiser, I think that's different than saying that you want your name to be Andrew and we're gonna address you as Andrew. And that that's, that's really what this is driving towards.
So then I think my question then becomes of if I, because it's been my nickname and I can be called Bruiser, but I decide now that I want my nickname to let's say be Andy instead of Andrea, that can't happen. And then I get concerned that now we are going into territory of discrimination because whoever's decided, like who decides what's a nickname and what is appropriate to be a nickname? And so if this is the way it's written, there are no nicknames. There are names on the record.
And I I believe that that's the formality by which we're we're addressing the model policy by putting this in and saying this, this is the process to get that accomplished.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how does this, as it addresses my, how does this conform to the law?
It talks, the law talks specifically about It talks, the law talks specifically about um. Model policy says, let me be clear that students must be referred to by the names. Or a common nickname associated with names and pronouns appearing on the official student record. Which is based on the student's legal name and sex. Students can be referred to by a different preferred name and pronoun only upon the written approval of a parent or eligible student. That's the language from the model policy.
Other thoughts or questions or concerns? As you were part of the policy committee?
Yeah, this is just what we thought was the most. Reasonable approach, if if Andrea wants to be called Andy, then. As long as. Andrea's parents are okay with it. Then Andrea's called Andy.
Okay, final thoughts before we move on?
I I do have one question. Um and maybe we'll get to this, are all of these being proposed for the consent agenda or are there certain ones that we would pull out?
We definitely can hold these three, in fact, from the consent engine, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And any others that maybe we've had a little bit of, or we just want to study a little bit more, that's fine too, but certainly these three.
Like all the ones about the superintendent?
Move on to uh seven fourteen.
Yes, sir. I I C A field trips and excursions um. First and foremost, we're retitling the policy, we're we're pulling out the term excursion or. Not, at at some point excursion might have been a good idea, we don't think that's necessarily appropriate, it's a field trip or it's not a field trip. On excursion, the 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 change in language in order to meet the requirements of the model policy really occur on. Uh lines twenty four and twenty five, overnight travel accommodations used for school related activities shall be based on the sex. To the extent required by law, um we've also included a legal reference of Grimm versus Gloucester County School Board. In the updated code provisions.
I I might be overthinking this, but I do see that and excursion is just stricken in the subject line, does that translate to the title at the top? Or is that just basic information for us in this meeting?
It it would be a revision to the policy itself, so subject field trips, it would it would just become. I I C A instruction field trips. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so all the matter before that that we see in the. Right, okay, okay, just wanted to confirm that, I got my answer. Thank you.
I I'm not seeing what you're seeing, which might be part of the. Seven fifteen, uh policy revised policy I J school counseling programs. Uh in this particular instance, you and you may recall that we we did a revision to this policy in April of twenty twenty three. We're uh coming back to you with revision and adding uh s- uh specific lines on twenty two and twenty three. Um under social emotional counseling, we are adding discussions related to gender or self awareness. There's also the removal of or strike through of social emotional counseling on line thirty six.
Give it a second, any thoughts or questions? On that addition and and strike through on social emotional, Ms. Ordigo?
So to clarify, we are sort of adding to the definition of social emotional counseling and then. We are. Removing that from what is required.
Related to the fact that it's short term. Is that, if I'm understanding your question, you're asking perhaps why we're removing social emotional on line thirty six?
Something to it at the top and then we're taking it out at the bottom, so we're 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 adding to the definition of it and then we are. We are making it not, just tell me what we're doing with the, what we're striking.
Right, because of the the short term, th- there's not necessarily affirmative parental. Guardian or consent related to the very short term interaction needs, what we're trying to do is define. Where parents may wish to utilize uh an opt out provision in terms of counseling services provided to them. So the committee felt like we really needed to define and and include that component under the idea of social emotional counseling. But relative to. There may be some instances in in very short order where a student needs counseling support. We're gonna provide that in the time, uh but if it were of a longer duration, there's that opt out provision that is available. I hope I'm answering your question correctly. Hope I'm getting to what you're trying to ask.
So if there are, if there are parents that don't want their child to be counseled. As defined, you know, about things that are defined in C.
Correct.
They they opt out.
They can, they can provide, w- we provide at the beginning of the school year, notification of our school counseling. Uh process and and i- items, a parent can opt out at that point or can opt out during the course of the year. If he or she wishes to opt out, eh opt their child out.
And how do we define sh- short duration?
Hmm, why don't I let Ms. Walter, I I I think it would be of the more immediate n- need. Why don't you come to the mic so that everybody can hear you?
As written in the policy, uh for short duration counseling, which is needed to maintain order, discipline or productive learning environment. So an example of that would be if a student is having a difficult time um. In the classroom and a counselor is called to help deescalate them, regulate their bo- and help them back to class, that would be an ex- example of a. Short term to help in that environment, yes.
It's it's really about the immediacy of the need.
Think you and I have talked about this before, so if a chi- a child is needing long term. Sorry, my computer is acting crazy, discussions related to gender or self awareness. When are parents brought into that discussion? Because if it's long term.
So if if a student related to any topic, but if a student needs long term counseling. Counselors work with families to provide resources in the community that they can access.
Thank you.
And it doesn't have to be what Ms. Young alluded to, the gender self awareness, it could be anger management, social skills, grief and loss. That's already been a a standard practice. Yeah, okay. Uh Ms. Donner, did I speak over you? Did you have a question?
No, I don't know.
Yes, please.
Um I know it's, I don't think it's in here, what is the standard procedure for any any indications of self harm or harming? Others in a counseling situation?
Um we do have a separate suicide policy, uh if it comes to. So there's self harm and suicide, um two different categories, but uh parents are notified. With the the, there is a clause in code as well. Um that if the if the concern for suicide is related to um suspected abuse or neglect, that call goes to CPS.
That was gonna be my next question, so if there's if there's suspected abuse of a child or. Fear of a child's fear of abuse, there's already, there are other policies that govern that.
Yes, we have a child abuse neglect uh mandate. Can't remember the exact title of the policy, I policy, but I apologize, but a mandatory reporter po- uh policy, we have a suicide policy as well, yes.
Thank you.
I just have a question, what happens if a child is having um? Difficulty with social skills or anger related to gender and self awareness. So then there, you just tell them no counseling? I'm trying to.
I'm trying to, that's a very. We have to take situations individually as they come. Um so if a student was struggling with social skills, we would support them with social skills. If a student was struggling with anger management, we would support them with anger management. Um so, you know, we have to look at all that's that's going on. If a parent has opted their child out of those services, then we wouldn't be providing those.
But would you then refer them to, student comes and says, hey, I the, eh I'm I'm struggling and the counselor. Presumes that maybe it's one of these things that the parent has opted them out, would the counselor still reach out to the parent and say, I would recommend?
So if a parent opted their child out from school counseling services at this level, they likely would not be seeing the counselor. So it, that may come from an administrator who found something out. But if they're opting their child out from any service from their counselor, then the counselor may not be aware.
So then at that point, if something's happening, then the principal would reach out to the parent.
If they're aware, yes, yes.
If there's something, e- even if a parent had opted out, if something traumatic is happening in a child's life. Then and they don't, they can't have any immediate counseling services because their parents have opted out. The principal can be contacting the parent.
As long as the principal is aware.
As long as the principal's aware.
I think if we felt there was an im- an immediate danger to a student, we would intervene.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walter. Final thoughts or comments before we move on to uh our action item for the evening? Uh we will move on to item eight one, is there a motion to approve the personal actions as presented this evening? As amended, I said presented and I'm reading it, I'm literally reading as amended, as amended this evening.
Mr. Chair, I move to um approve personnel items as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner.
Mrs. Ordigo. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Uh board member comments? Ms. Donner?
I'll go. Oh, it's so, it's been a lot of fun in schools, I got to spend some time at uh Stone House. And uh Tuano with Mrs. Hunley, so it's always great to go with our local superstar, all the kids run up and they all know her. Uh and then I had the opportunity to participate in the Whaley Walk. Uh which was amazing and to see that school raise over seventeen thousand dollars. Which is huge uh for Matthew Whaley, so so excited, I think money's still coming in from what I hear. And just to see some, just walking with the fourth graders as we got to walk through Colonial Williamsburg and stop on some tours, some spots. Uh in uh William and Mary and how those teachers connected, watching how they connected that to the Virginia Studies. Fourth grade social studies curriculum, they then connected it to math and had the kids doing some math and then they connected it to the geometry of the buildings. I mean, it's just so amazing and they connected it to science because there was a weather vane. So the way that they take something and connect all those different pieces um was amazing. And then we helped cover, Mrs. Hunley joined me to cover second grade uh recess for those teachers that day. And to watch Officer Matt be chased by thirty kids playing tag. And again, like the our school resource officers and what a wonderful part of the community they are. Same thing when we were up at Stone House, the kids love that security officer there. And so there's just so much good that's going on in these schools and our and our teachers are working so, so hard. And to Mrs. Hunley, when there was a subs- not, there was a bus driver in training on our bus route. And I think I probably scared him because I was so excited. And Ms. Nikki was training him, I think this special hour, he looked terrified and was like, why is this lady so excited about me driving the bus, so? Um and he came back in the afternoon, I was like, you came back, so he was just like, yes ma'am, I'm here, I'm like. So just really excited for that, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, Ms. Hunley?
Yes, um ditto. I'm I'm excited when my board members want to come with me because they know I start taking out the camera. And I'm trying to capture all the wonderful things and then I put them in awkward situations sometimes and they never say no. And um I appreciate that, um so I went to Matoka um. And I guess the thing that really impresses me to see the teachers working so hard and the children working so hard. And then you kind of remember where we are academically, we're not, to see the gr- I know they've made growth. I know they've made, I see them doing fabulous things, so s- and when I look up the screen and you see those scores, it's just, you just. It seems like such a disconnect, but but I could see how hard they're working and they're engaged and they're learning and the teachers are. My teacher was on the table, t- and and, you know, the things they go through just to uh. Make uh learning meaningful and she was safe, apparently there's a. How do you call it, a measurement and she was in the right thing for the measurement, so I don't want to get her in trouble. But um also when Sarah and I, well, Ms. Ordigo, I guess I should be formal. Went to, we went to Laurel Lane and again, we saw kids doing some math that was like out of the. The world, like i- it was just so refreshing and we got a picture, selfie picture with Taylor Swift. Model of a Taylor Swift and um. I, I don't know, I just really enjoy, I wish more people could get in to see what good things are happening. Also, there are great things happening in sports, um I don't have children in sports anymore, but every time I happen to see, I know we're doing. Big things in football and track and so let's not ignore kids that are participating in that. I know we had some big dra- wins at the drama department, again, let's not let let, you know, forget about. And congratulate them as well, so yes, I'm super excited to be back in school and I will continue. To let everybody know what a wonderful, wonderful job we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, Ms. Young?
Yes, I was wonderfully here about people going in schools and um. I think that after COVID, that was probably the best thing after when we could get back into schools. I really don't have much else to say except congratulations to Dr. Kiefer. Who he's been inadvertently called that many times already, we knew he'd make it, so just congratulations, so thank you.
Hey, welcome back to you, Ms. Young, I'm glad to see you uh moving around.
I'm happy to be moving around, believe me.
Ms. Hummel?
Um well, I've been out of the country for a couple weeks and I must say, it's great to be back in. The United States, back in this community, um had the opportunity to travel to Oman. And hearing from some of the um our guides that were so proud of their Sultan. Who had uh actually provided free education in the last twenty years. To their citizens and it struck me, I'm like, oh my gosh, we are so lucky to be in this country. Um with the public education that we have, that just, I don't want any of us to take it for granted. I don't want us to take that for granted, I don't want us to take the fact that we had an election while I was gone. And I'm I'm following the election from, you know, Abu Dhabi and I'm looking at everything. And I'm thinking, this is a great country that we can have an election, we can bring new um school board members in. And I wish all of them the best um in the coming uh four years. And I'm very excited that they will work with the three of you, I'm very, very excited. Because the three of you are going to be such wonderful mentors to them. And hopefully um propel the new board members. The same level, to the same level of civil discourse that all of us have enjoyed in the last eight years, so.
That's right.
That's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I do, uh e- e- exactly what Mrs. Hummel said is uh. Um yeah, we have three wonderful school board members who would be returning in January and I um and I. Uh I very much uh uh it's been a real privilege to work with uh with everybody on the board. So I uh I'll say more about that at my last board meeting.
We have a few more meetings.
However, I I want to reiterate again uh the 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 real importance of continuing to support. As best we can, all of our support staff because um they really, it it's that staff. All of our support staff because, um, they really, it, it's that staff that'll, that allows our school system to operate. Um, and without them, we, we wouldn't, we couldn't, we wouldn't have schools, we couldn't operate, it's really, really, really important. And sometimes, you know, maybe coming out of Richmond once in a while, that ought to be stuck in, um, um, the, the, the need for, uh. Uh, financial support, uh, in addition to the teachers. I also, uh, once again. Uh, wanna point out that, uh, and just listening to, um, the discussion about our, uh, program of studies. We've, we've, we are so lucky to have in- incredibly comprehensive high school programs, all, in all three of our high schools. Um, there are high schools around the state that can't come even close to being, being able to provide the variety, the depth. Um, of, uh, of coursework and, um, and experiences for, uh, our students and I just wanted, I, I think it's important. For people to hear that, um, our, our parents and, and, um, interested citizens that, um. These are really comprehensive high schools, they really are the best.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Ms. Ordigo?
Um, yeah, as Mrs. Hunley alluded to, we went to, um, Laurel Lane Elementary School the other day and we, we had the task of, um, being judges for anti-bullying campaign posters. That I guess students submitted in October during Anti-Bullying Month and, and, uh, staff picked a few and then we, we chose for, for different grade levels. And we got to go to the classrooms and present certificates and announce, well, the, the counselor announced who won. And it was just really fun to see the students get very, very excited, not just the winners, but their, their classmates and, um. My takeaway was just that it was such a positive atmosphere in that school and just a very uplifting experience, so, um. And there were so many different takes on, you know, the, the task at hand, which was to create a poster that reflected, um, the message to be a buddy, not a bully. And, and it was wonderful to see all the different interpretations of that that all still encapsulated that, um, very important message. Um, thank you to all the staff tonight, this was, this was not a light load, this was, this was a lot of, I mean, it feels heavy to us and, and. It's just been a few hours for us and I know it's, it's, you know, days and weeks for our staff, so. Thank you for all that goes into this and for keeping us on track and, um. Reiterate, Mrs. Hummel's congratulations to the newly elected, um, school board members who will be joining us in January. And we look forward to working with them and continuing the, the traditions that we've long held on the school board. And we look forward to seeing who the, um, city is going to send us and I'm sure whoever it is will be a wonderful addition as well, so. Just excited for what's coming and, um, yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, yeah, th- those are really my thoughts as well, just to say congratulations to Mr. Hoseing, Mr. Riffle, and Mr. Cavazos. To, to, um, also express my appreciation to those that, uh, threw their hat into the campaign process and saw it through to the very end. It was, uh, close, there were several close races, uh, which speaks volumes to the level of work, uh, how competitive it was. Um, on the, as they campaigned, um, appreciate everybody's willingness to serve here, uh, those that, um, uh. Campaigned during this recent election, um, and just to offer that it really is, it really generally is, uh, an honor to serve at this local level. And, um, so it would be. Be sad to say goodbye when we do. Uh, move on to upcoming events. On, uh, this tomorrow. Fifteenth or the seventeenth, uh, I believe most, if not all of us will be at the V S B A Annual Convention. At the Lodge here in Williamsburg.
Convention.
Be a busy week. Uh, and then upcoming meetings, closed session, regular meeting on the twentieth of November, five fifteen and six thirty. Uh, six thirty beginning our, uh, regular meeting at the, uh, school gymnasium, James Blair Middle School Joint Meeting and. Excuse me, joint meeting on the first of December, eight thirty at the Stryker Center, that's a location change, is that? That is a location change, right, so just, so that everyone's aware, it has been changed to the Stryker Center, room one twenty-seven, December first at eight thirty in the morning. And then December twelfth, closed session and work session, four and four thirty respectively here back at the Enix. Uh, I think that we are in agreement for our regular meeting. That, um, item seven, one through seven twelve on our, uh, policies discussion can be placed on a consent agenda. Seven thirteen, some fourteen and seven fifteen should be added to as action items, so we are clear on that. And with that. Young's good over there? We will adjourn.